Okay, do you guys have six o'clock on your bells?
15.
Okay. 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 All right. Fifteen, fourteen. It's a countdown. You let me know, Michael.
We have red cards.
What does that mean?
No, your wife.
Oh.
Good evening. I will now call to order the October 1st, 2025 closed, oh, session, wait. Yes. Closed session meeting of the South Pasadena City Council at 6:00 PM. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson, councilmember Primmith, councilmember Cacciotti, here. Mayor Protem Rossi, here. Mayor Braun.
Here. If you would like to make a public comment, now is the time. Please submit a speaker card to the acting chief city clerk. He will maintain a list of speakers. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, do we have any speakers?
No, Madam Mayor.
Anyone on Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
There being no one present to speak, I will now declare the public comment period closed. At this time, the city council will convene in closed session for the matters listed on the agenda. And I'll just note that councilmember Primmith did text us to say he's running late, but I'm sure he will join us, as will councilmember Ferguson. We'll confirm at the end. Good evening. I will now call to order the October 1st, 2025 regular city council meeting of the South Pasadena City Council at 7:08 PM. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson.
President.
Councilmember Primmith.
Here.
Councilmember Cacciotti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rossi.
Here.
Mayor Braun.
Here. Councilmember Cacciotti, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's my pleasure, Mayor. Would everyone please stand, face the American flag, put your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda is closed session announcements. City Attorney Diaz, could you please report out from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session for the items listed therein, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment, general public comment for non-agenda items. In an effort to better manage the business on the agenda, general public comment will be limited to 30 minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers remaining in the queue, they will be heard at the end of the meeting. If you would like to make a general public comment for items not on the agenda, please raise your hand on Zoom now or fill out a speaker card. Acting Chief City Clerk Perez, could you let us know if we have any speakers for general public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have 12 in person and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so 12 at 3:00 is 36 minutes. Should we, anybody feel like we should cut it to 2? Okay, we won't make anybody wait till the end of the meeting, but we're going to cut your minutes to 2 minutes. First three speakers are Yvonne LaRose, Corey Vito Cavaffian, and Colin Campbell. And I'm sorry you're going to have 2 minutes, but the good news is you won't have to wait till the end to make a comment.
I could go home and do it. I'm just excited because I'm over my concussion and now I'm working on the ambulatory issues. And I'm just so excited because the library has red cards! I'm sorry. Yes.
Love your enthusiasm.
It's hard to contain it. Okay, I'll behave. My presence tonight is from the domestic violence in HR space. And because of the recent threats to the progress we've made in those areas, I'm here to restate a concerned citizen's call to educate, to raise awareness of the telltale signs of abuse, and do positive things to subvert those conditions. In 2023, I petitioned the Public Safety Commission to support my conducting workshops focused on three at-risk populations. That request was met with silence. Earlier this month, another citizen echoed my proposal, this time advocating surveillance devices to detect warning signs and then intervene. His intent mirrored mine, but his method replaced the ethical engagement with technological monitoring. Let me be clear. Surveillance is not care. Survivors are not threats. Prevention doesn't come from authoritarian expansion, it comes from community. We must build systems that reflect our founding values, freedom of speech, freedom of privacy, freedom from fear, unjust persecution, and cruel and unusual punishment in homes, in workplaces, in classrooms, and in civic spaces. Let us remember the words from the Constitution and from the Bill of Rights.
Thank you. Next up is Corey Vito Cavaffian.
Yes.
Okay. You have 2 minutes.
Hello. Yeah, hello. Hello. Councilmember. Okay, so, hello. Good evening, councilmember, mayor, city staff, and members of the public. I'm here tonight to raise a version of concern about regarding the construction, serious concern going on at 92 Pinecrest Drive with clearly imminent threat to life and property. Let me put it simply, okay, that everybody can understand. A badly designed shoring system, especially one that relies on formulas, meaning electrical poles and misused soil coefficient, it is equivalent of placing a time bomb next to a neighboring building. It will hold until it doesn't. With the rainy season approaching, these dangers only escalate. We call the police, they say, "Come, take out the bomb." Oh, we don't do anything. We call the building official, "Oh, that's not, it has a stamp approved." Then let the California Board of Engineers deal with it. On Monday, September 29, OSHA intervened and temporarily shut down the site, a strong indication that something is seriously wrong. This is responsibility that should have been enforced by the city buildings and safety department, yet the state has to come in. The contractor was excavating without required Calosha permit, for God's sake. Everything over 7.5 feet, you don't have to have a Calosha permit. He doesn't even have a permit, and the city is allowing him to do the work for 2 weeks, okay? And in the past 2 weeks, I have more crack in it, I mean, what good is it going to do for me to hire $150,000 firm to collect $100,000 to repair? I'm still, you know, and I need to have really immediate stop work order to have this construction at 92 Pinecrest until the California Board of Professional Engineers conclude a full investigation of this. I have had multiple attempts to explain the code violation to the chief building official, who operate through a third-party trans-deck, and here's the ones we, once a week is here. Despite the repeated effort to reference clear violation of California Build-A-Bee, we showed them the matrix, for God's sake. No meaningful response has been given, no survey instrumentation.
Thank you so much.
But the top of the pile was done.
Thank you so much.
I really want stop order for this, please, and until the California Board of Engineers finish the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that there's been many communications between our city manager and our city attorney on this matter, so thank you for your comment. And I think they will continue to address some of your concerns, if needed. Colin Campbell. And next up is Josh Betta.
Hello.
And Bianca Richards.
Hi, city council. I went to LA Board of Supervisors yesterday, and I participated. There was a presentation on the fire and all the different things that happened, and one company was suggesting increased communications, you know, be able to help with critical infrastructure. They also brought up a good idea of enhancing for local communities, community centers. So St. James is the church I go to. We take in homeless people, and we try to get them back onto a good life as best we can. So this technology, I presented it, I asked LA Board of Supervisors if they wanted to join the Alpha Team. You're in charge, if you want to join the Alpha Team. Susie Wiles is interested in doing this, and I think it could help with identifying PTSDs in people, treating them, also identifying a shooter before a shooter's engaged, which is nice, and also for fire prevention and EMS emergency services. If you're interested, again, you would have to make the request. I'm not the person to make the request. So it's up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Betta. And next Bianca Richards, and after that Tiffany Hu.
Mayor, I leave my time to the interest of the very packed house.
Thank you. Okay, Bianca.
I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the Athens team, Timothy Anthony Jonathan Becky, for the presentations and the handouts regarding the new 3-stream trash collection. I know change is difficult, and the team presented the changes in a really organized and accessible way, and their handouts were just wonderful. And then I also wanted to thank Danielle Garcia, who kept the crowds in order and facilitated the Q&amp;A. The residents, we got a little testy, and Athens and Danielle just kept everybody just cool, calm, and responded in a professional way. And I also appreciate that Athens and the new contract, the bulky item pickup is wonderful. Yes, it's wonderful. And thank you still for continuing with the compost and the mulch giveaway.
Thank you. Okay, next Tiffany Hu. I didn't see her here. There she is. Hi, Tiffany. Okay. And after Tiffany will be Rosalina Cardenas.
Hi, council. I am the owner and resident of the house on Orange Grove and Oliver, and I'm sure many of you are aware that two Fridays ago, our family went through a very terrifying experience. At 5:00 AM, a speeding car raced down our Orange Grove and hit the curb at the bend and lost control and smashed into our garage. The driver lost his life. If that car had hit our house instead, it would have impacted where our 2-year-old daughter sleeps, which is, to us, very unimaginable. A similar incident happened 3 years ago that ended in another fatal accident with the driver coming down Orange Grove too fast, hitting the same garage. When the car smashed into our garage, it didn't just break walls, it shattered our sense of safety. A home is supposed to be a sanctuary, and so does ours, has become a place where we go to sleep, wondering if another car is coming through and coming crashing through. The frequency and severity of traffic accidents continue to get worse on our streets. I can only speak to our intersection on Orange Grove and Oliver, especially in that bend going down towards the 110 feels especially dangerous, especially at night when there's less cars on the road. The speed at which cars travel, the lack of visibility, signage, or whatnot, makes us extremely worried and fearful. The reality is that most of us feel helpless in making changes to our cities and our streets. It comes to the decisions that you, our council, and leaders make. Even small things like the right signages, lights, red light technology barriers can save lives. We urge you to take action and help make self-pass a safe place for our neighbors and us young families looking to raise the next generation. I don't want these incidents to be forgotten as time passes and hope we can work together to make our streets safer. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think, Todd, I think we're addressing that.
Yes, we have an ongoing assessment from our traffic engineer right now, giving us some ideas on immediate and midterm actions.
Thank you. Okay. Rosalina Cardenas, and then Mila Rankin.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everybody. Rosalina Cardenas, 451 Prospect Circle, right off of Orange Grove, coming to speak about the same issue we had a couple of weeks ago, and 3 years ago, and 5 years ago, and 7 years ago, and 10 years ago, and 15 years ago, and on and on. We've been in our house for 25 years. I can sit here and tell you, but I only have 2 minutes, the number of accidents that we have experienced on that bend, and it has gotten worse. And we are really hoping, our whole community, to be able to work with the city manager, the city attorney, with the council members, and the mayor, to really work on making our streets safe. And we're going to need to work with Pasadena, because it begins in Pasadena and it ends in South Pasadena with the pursuits, with the high-speed drivers. So I beg you all to, let's make this a priority, so we're not talking about this in another 25 years when these kids are our age. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to say that I did visit the house, Tiffany's house, 2 days after that accident, and Todd, and Nick, and our, and Michael, our traffic engineer, were out there, and I know that they are working and will bring something back. So thank you for your concerns. Okay, Mila Rankin. And after that Beth Levinson.
I live next to Tiffany on Oliver Street, and I want to echo, Orange Grove is so dangerous. I can't pull out of my driveway. The cars come by so fast. The stop sign at Meridian, it's a roll-through or a speed-through on both sides. And we have a brand-new granddaughter. My daughter likes to take her in the stroller. It's not safe to cross the street. And I would like for you to consider closing off Oliver, so it's not a place where people can make left turns onto Orange Grove or come down Orange Grove and turn onto our street. It's really dangerous. So I just want to, again, I was here after the first accident, and there was a lot of discussion about making changes. Nothing has happened. And so here we are again, another loss of life, and I don't feel safe either, pulling out of my driveway, going into my driveway. So please, take it seriously and help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Levinson. And then Deborah Belvoir, Belvoir.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us. I also live, I live across the street from Tiffany and Mila. This, I've been there for 4 years, and this is our, my 3rd very serious accident that we've experienced. And it seems that we are currently at a crossroads. We can continue to not do anything, and we can continue to mourn with our neighbors and mourn the young families who grieve on our corner, or we can actually do something by focusing on safety of the people who live here. So I know that there's a focus on people who are driving through South Pasadena, they're going from whatever freeway to get onto the 110, but we live here. This is our home. This is where we've, our family is here, my grandson comes to visit, and we need to be safe. And I seriously don't care that people need to get from one freeway to another. This is my neighborhood. And now we have the emergency vehicles driving up through Meridian. And people are using our street, Meridian Street, as an alternative to Orange Grove. It's getting out of control. So it's a neighborhood. We don't live on a freeway, we don't live on a main street. We, it's just a neighborhood in South Pasadena. So please, consider our safety and our investment. Invest back in on us. Have our tax money come back to us so that there's a return on investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Deborah Belvoir, Belvoir, okay.
Thank you. I'm here also about the place on the construction across the street from me on Pinecrest. So I'm very heartened here that you've already looked somewhat into it, and someone did return my call from City Hall the last time I had an issue. Mainly, though, here is, I bought my house in South Pasadena in 1985, single woman then, I still am now, but anyway, I've taken good care of my house. And since they began this construction last year, it's been over a year, and they started drilling pylons. I am right, my house is closer to that place than about you all. So I don't have much to do about it. But except, I live on a hill, and that's down there, and I have seen, for the first time in my life, cracks in the foundation of my house. So I had it fixed 2 times, 1 time last year and 1 time this year, and it still keeps moving. So there must be something done about the subsidence, et cetera. I know we, you know, but thank you for being able to listen to us about this. This is another issue that, it's really different, excuse me, it's really difficult to think that nobody's doing anything about houses that's destroying mine. And last but not least, bravo for these women talking about the streets. My also, I cannot pull out of my driveway, because now we have a ways, which is whatever they talk about. People cut through Oak Hill Avenue over to Avenue 60, and from Avenue 60 back to Monterey Road, and I cannot tell you, I live on the corner with a stop sign, and nobody stops. I've asked the police before, and I haven't seen them for years. So definitely, people who have issues with, if you're calling about not stopping a stop sign, please do something too.
Thank you. Todd, we can follow up with Ms. Belvoir. I think we have a couple more comments. We have Michael McCollum and Sharon Karimi.
Good evening, council. Mike McCollum. I live on Orange Grove as well, so I'm here to underscore the urgency of this matter. I appreciate that the city's looking into it. I think that there are some probably easy design fixes with yellow signs and flashing lights and whatnot that could be pretty easy fixes, but I want to sort of highlight a broader issue, which is, you know, we're a small, beautiful city tied into a large metropolis. So we have, we get a lot from the metropolis, but we also have a lot of people moving through. We really are a unique city in the sense that we can become a local, walkable city, a 15-minute city. I don't know if anyone's heard of that. I have the book here, 15-Minute City. I'd be happy to loan it to anyone. But it's about how do we sort of reclaim our cities, our streets for our pedestrians, our kids, our bicyclists? I've got 2 teenagers who should be able to walk or bike to high school, but it's really too dangerous from where we are. We should have more protected bike lanes. Lastly, on the noise issue, it's the same theme. Maybe it's a crisis of young men in our society speeding and driving while under the influence and driving really loud motorcycles and stuff, but the issue of loud motorcycles, waking people up at night, bone-shatteringly loud noises. There's a vehicle code ordinance 275051 that's coming into place, and these are outlawed. And I want to urge the city to look into this, to enforcing this, so that we could keep people, protect their sleep at night from people driving through with incredibly loud motors, vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Sharon Karimi.
Hi, good evening. I too am here to echo the street issues. I live on Columbia. We went, we've been here for about 10 years. We went through the accidents, we went through a 3rd accident. In between those 2 accidents, we've had 2 of our vehicles totaled in front of our house by people turning right from Orange Grove onto Columbia, and endless incidences with crossing the street on Columbia and Orange Grove, to the point that it took years before we let our 3 boys cross, independent of us. And now those 3 boys, who are 16, 14, and 12, are no longer allowed to walk on Orange Grove. It's just too dangerous. People coming off the, speeding up north, coming off the curb, and, you know, why even risk it? And as Mike said, the noise is just insane. You can hear the vehicles coming down the 110, you can hear them exit the Orange Grove and all the way up to, I don't know how far they get in, to Pasadena. And it wakes us up at 3:00 in the morning, at 2:00 in the morning, at 5:00 in the morning, at all times of the night. And I'm sure Pasadena feels the same. And we just, I wanted to take this opportunity to share how that, all of this is impacting, you know, one side of South Pasadena. Thank you.
Thank you. And Todd, I don't know if you want to say anything, I just wanted to mention, I know we've talked about traffic issues. There's been a lot of discussion with our staff about traffic issues, and particularly specific spots, and mobility plans. So I don't want anybody to walk away thinking we haven't discussed this, but we're limited to what we can say, because it's not agendized. But...
Yeah, I think, just second to the comments, we do have our traffic engineers taking a look at that area right now, giving us some suggestions on what we can do to help provide more safety barriers for those areas, so we're not back here again hearing these stories in a few years. So once we have the list of recommendations, we'll be back to the city council, likely with the design contract.
And I think we've looked at Columbia with the Rennwicks.
Looked at Columbia, and I know our city engineer is involved with the city of Pasadena as well, working on a joint project there. I know staff has been out meeting with some of the property owners in that area as well, just kind of talking to them, listing their ideas, signage, other barriers, bollards, that sort of thing.
And Garfield and Marengo, there have been several. I just don't want people to think we're not doing anything.
Yeah, it's a, it's a community, we've got a number of these areas that, throughout the community, different streets that are currently having different types of experiences. So the goal would be in the next year is to come up with more of a toolbox and start, you know, experimenting with some of these neighborhood projects, speedboards, different road designs, barriers, that sort of thing. But right now, we're trying to deal with the most immediate 3 or 4 streets that we're getting the most complaints on right now. And obviously, with the recent accident and the accident history there, that's at the top of our list.
Right, so, I just, yeah. Okay, thank you so much.
Mayor, just a quick comment following up, so he keeps track of this. So in our, my district, over in Garfield, as people get off the Pasadena freeway at night coming home, they're going eastbound down Gravilla, and just the stop sign near approach, just by the park, Garfield Park, just shooting by there. I want to thank the chief and police department for getting officers there. I can hear it, I get home at night, there's just every 5 minutes, there's a siren going off, because they're pulling people over to just run through the stop sign. I think the number 1 issue in the city, one of them is pedestrian safety, as we all know, in our districts, there's different areas. But also, I'd like the investigation about the loud motorcycles at night, because I've had that in the last, like, year. It's like 3, 4 times a week where people, my neighbors, crossing from Franciscan Woods, Pasquale, the homeowners' association, same thing. Somebody's out there at midnight, 3 o'clock, and you wake up, because there's loud motorcycle engine just flying down the street. So I'm not sure we can do about it, but maybe we plant some people and just get these individuals who are just doing it. You know, I didn't realize what was going on here. I knew it was our district, but that might be something to look at, too, Mayor. Just, thank you.
And I was going to say this for my council comments, but I would actually like to see both short-term, long-term planning, one beginning with Vision Zero. We are lucky enough to have a commissioner who is a public works commissioner, who also is a lead on the county's Vision Zero. So I'd love to see an ad hoc formed that works on Vision Zero. Vision Zero's focus is to have 0 deaths and 0 critical injuries. And then the other piece is the mobility action plan, which we can speak to later in bringing some things back, especially from, like, the tool design group and their presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I'll now declare the public comment period closed for non-agenda items. Next on number 3 is our Merchant Minute, Piccadilly Grace. I'd like to invite Chamber of Commerce President Lori Wheeler, oh, there she is, to introduce this new business, well, new business-ish.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Thank you again for having me. I'm Lori Wheeler, president of the South Pasadena Chamber of Commerce, and once again, I'm very thrilled to bring one of our new businesses, well, new owners of a business, to introduce herself and her business to you, Linda Grace of Piccadilly Grace.
Thank you, Lori. Hello, mayors, council members. I'm Linda Grace. In 2022, I purchased, I acquired Fiori Market Cafe. It was very, very beloved. Bill was fantastic. He approached me, I think he was kind of, he was done, he was done with the food business. I own San Marino Cafe and Marketplace in San Marino. I own San Marino Cafe and Marketplace in San Marino. And about six months ago, I decided to rebrand both cafes to Piccadilly Grace. It is a family legacy and so the South Pasadena Fiori Market Cafe is now Piccadilly Grace South Pasadena. We are a cafe and marketplace. We do great food, beverages, hospitality is my thing, and I'm a community girl. I want to get involved. I'm so happy to be in South Pasadena. I've done a lot of work in, in San Marino and I hope to have deeper roots in South Pasadena as well. I just signed a new lease, so I'm not going anywhere. And yeah, I, I welcome everybody in the community to come and engage and eat our delicious food and drink our delicious drinks.
Great. Well, thank you and wel, welcome. Welcome to Piccadilly Grace. I know you've been here for a while, but.
Mayor, what are your hours?
We are open seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And there's also a pop-up on our patio, a smash burger pop-up, Thursday through Sunday in the evenings.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I know the food there is delicious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we do third-party delivery and first-party delivery through our websites.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to item number four, changes to the agenda. I think this is going to be a hot topic, so I'm, I'm opening, any council member have any reordering, additions or deletions to the agenda? I think we've had some talk about moving the tree ordinance item up. Do we want to do that before the consent agenda or do we want to do consent agenda? Before, we've got kids here wanting to make some comments, we want to get them to bed. So, so we are going to move up, if, if everyone agrees up here, we're going to move up, item number 18 will become item number five. And then everything else will just, we will add a number two. Is everybody good with that? Okay.
To make it simple so we don't get mixed up later on, just like 4A or something?
Oh, okay, thank you, Michael. Yes, this will be item 4B.
Okay.
Yeah. This is item 4B, everything else keeps its, it keeps its same number. Thank you, thank you, Michael. Okay, so item eight, item 18, which is now item 4B. This is the consideration of the second reading and adoption of an ordinance regarding trees and shrubs. City Attorney Roxanne Diaz will present the item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening, you have the second reading of the tree ordinance and also a draft of the administrative regulations. With respect to the ordinance, we've received some, a number of feedback to expand the definition of the types of trees that are subject to the ordinance. And we have been working with our arborist and I know that there is a resolution that lists the, lists the native trees that are subject to the ordinance. It also includes a really robust list of drought tolerant trees as well. We've asked our arborist to take a look at that, to see if those are appropriate trees for us to add as part of what is a protected tree. We've also have engaged our arborist and our consultant, actually our contract, our tree contractor, to also do a little bit more research and provide us a list of trees that are characteristic of the city. And so with that, I think that we'd like to bring this ordinance back in November. And so that way, we can have a better discussion with a list of trees and types of trees that are in front of you. But certainly if the council, any member of the council has any other comments they would like us to consider and, and look at, that's what we're here for tonight.
And I know that, I think several council members have some things to say, so.
And then for, just for the benefit of the public, what this means is that there's going to be no action on the ordinance this evening. And I think we have some direction already with the city manager to look at the list of trees or the types of trees subject to the ordinance.
Right, so I think we anticipate that there will be no action on this item.
That is correct. And the administrative regulations, they're in draft form, they're in your packet, and if you have any feedback with respect to that, we're happy to take that feedback.
Okay, and we'll have a little bit of discussion here and then we're going to take public comment, so that if you came here to public comment, we want you to have that opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, two minutes, it'll be two minutes because we have, I think, how many comments?
16 in person and one hand.
Okay, so two very fast minutes. But why don't you go ahead and Sheila?
Do you guys, do you have questions or you want me to go ahead?
You want to go?
Okay, so, okay, I do have some questions. I think my primary concerns are around the definition of mature protected tree. And I understand that you're going to create a more robust list, but I think we went from a situation where we had trees that were anything over 12 inches in caliber to, to basically, to, to basically just that very, very short list of 15 protected trees. I am concerned of some unintended consequences because, you know, it's, I think what we didn't do is we were looking, my, my whole focus was on those, the provisions around safety and the trees that pose public safety risks, whether it was to private homeowners or the streets. I think what we didn't, or what I guess wasn't considered was, was moving or the recommendations came in, was our tree canopy and what the impact would be to our tree canopy or potential unintended consequences and kind of what our strategies are around maintaining our tree canopy or replenishing. Because I think once you remove, especially in cases of development projects, you know, if you remove replacement criteria, then we don't really have a strategy to replace the trees that are getting removed, particularly for like the large developments that could come in and can take out like 20 trees at a time if all those trees don't fall under the definitions of, like, protected. So I think we need to strike some sort of balance that might need to be more than just the listing of trees, but also looking at, you know, how they contribute to the canopy. I also know that, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard is related to the high fire and very high fire severity zones. I think whether it's in administrative rules or the, or in the ordinance itself, I think we need to be a little bit more clear about the laws around that. Because first, there are some state laws that actually currently override, override our existing laws for trees that are within five feet of a structure if it's in a high fire severity zone. So I think we want to make sure that we have that language in there. And I think some ordinances I looked into included language that specifically prohibits species such as like eucalyptus and pine and pine and palm trees in that, in spaces near the high fire severity zones. So those would, you know, even if we, if we picked something that was more than just about what kind of tree, but if we looked at like, you know, the size of the tree, maturity of tree and height, we'd still want to look at what kind of rules we want to have in place for the high fire severity zones and realize that they are dealing with a different situation up in the hills. Then, you know, another thing I think is brought forward by the community was concerns around the removal of city trees. And, you know, I gave you some language yesterday. I think for sake of transparency and public trust, there's language that can be added into the ordinance that specifically looks at things like the, what standards should apply for the city to remove a tree, like hazardous conditions, infrastructure, utility, public improvement capital projects, fire safety, defensible space, and emergency circumstances. Also, a little bit more clarity around the arborist assessment, public notice, and by public notice, in the case of the city, it is just putting, you know, that, that notice on the tree, not saying to send it out to all of, you know, the, the mailings, but just letting people know and then letting them know the reason why. And then also having a tree replacement and mitigation plan. So looking at like, and having as part of our ordinance is, you know, one new tree of a city-approved species removed, canopy equivalency, looking at replacement trees that collectively achieve the same or greater over a 10-year projected canopy. And then like, I mean, this is kind of a strange one, but it's like a fee in lieu because the city would basically be paying itself, but making sure that it's going towards an urban forest fund. And that would be something we would do as part of creating our urban forestry management. And then a public reporting and accountability. So I know that we have a tree inventory, but it hasn't been updated and the city manager is working on updating that and creating that system. But, you know, one where we are letting the public know and reporting back on the number and locations of the city trees that have been removed, the ones where replacements have been planted and canopy change metrics. I did go on to tree people, there's some fun public information there to look at canopy coverage across different cities and to see what areas, and I think it's something that, it's a good thing to keep track of. So South Pasadena apparently has a 26%, 26.5% canopy coverage. And you can see other cities like San Marino is around 27%. But then you can see other cities like Alhambra that drop down to 20. So I do think that we want to be looking at our tree canopy and looking at like strategies, and that can come into the urban forestry management place, but actual strategies and goals of how we want to get there to increase it, because that's something that's listed in our green action plan. Those are the, I think the majority of my comments, but I think it, like, not just looking at what trees fall under the drought tolerant, but I think a little bit more deep thought into what we're considering, trees that would be, still have replacement requirements that come into it.
And we've conveyed that to the arbor, to our contractor, and so we can also include that on the list with respect to canopy coverage and some of the parameters that you've brought up. And with respect to the removal of city trees, I received that information and I'm looking at putting that into the administrative regulations. And so, and that way, everyone knows what the process is, that the city is following as well.
Michael, did you have?
Mayor Protam, quick question. Would you want some of those changes to go through a commission?
I, I don't, I think we need to definitely move the urban forestry management plan to the commission. I think, I'm not sure when the next time NREC is meeting. They meet in two months. I guess my concern, you know, part of it is, when we were first really doing this, I think the focus was really on these hazardous trees and then these other elements came. So if we're going to, if it was going to go to a commission, I'd want some, I want to delineate out a piece of it. But that would be my one concern about delaying that because I think there's issues there. But I, I'd almost go be more conservative initially and then widen or like, or narrow it down.
I think it's important for council to decide whether we're going to stay with the amendment process that you've outlined. I think you've got some good ideas. Or if we're going to refer it to a commission. I think that's important to know, just because our commissioners, you know, they may want to participate, the public may want that, but then that may not be the timeline that we need as a council.
So, are you, can I jump in?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so I, I really, I don't support this ordinance as written. And I do want to thank the public for comments. You know, the, the kind of the fake notices on the trees were actually very effective because you fooled some of us. And I got one on my door before I came out of here. But, but it's, it's important, I mean, it really, the public comments have been helpful. So I think what happened is I'm looking at the way it was drafted and kind of just, we were trying to get this done. I don't mind this sort of concept of the, for the trimming of trees and a permit required for trimming, we ask for, we say it's only required for mature protected trees. So that would be a tree with a caliber greater than, I think it's four inches, that is on the protected list. I don't have a problem with that for a tree trimming permit. Most people aren't getting tree trimming permits, but it would also, so oaks, you would have to get a permit, anything that's protected. I think one of the biggest issues is the removal process. And I think what we defined this term, mature protected trees, and we said you don't have to get a permit except for mature protected trees. And if you kind of do the math back and forth, so crepe myrtles wouldn't be protected, jacarandas wouldn't be protected. You know, there's all kinds of trees that would not be protected. So what I think perhaps was, is one of our issues, and I hate to be the nitpicky lawyer, but I'm going to be, is that we picked the wrong defined term, which really is the wrong concept. I think in my mind, on tree removal permits, it should be mature trees, right? So anything over a certain inches. I don't know if that's 12 inches or four inches or six inches, but I think we either, we either enlarge the list of protected trees and we codify it, or we just talk about the size of the tree. But it also has all of those, the caveats and the things we were really trying to get to were people who were having trouble getting homeowner's insurance, because that happened a lot this year. Fire severity zones. We were trying to get to dead and dying trees, the things that we were requiring people to do with a dead tree in their yard were ridiculous. We were trying to get to anything that's uprooting infrastructure. We've had several liability claims. So I think if we can protect the mature trees from removal, or they, they require a permit, but if we keep in those exceptions, that if you have one of these hazardous situations, you can get the tree removal permit, that's really what we were shooting for. I think we overshot, we almost shot ourselves, but we, we kind of went a little too far. That's just my, I think there's some issues related to the development and, and the sort of 50% back on site. I think that's worth looking into. Developers, they take out trees, they have to put 50% of their replacement trees on site. That was a comment that I thought was very helpful. So I think there are just a few, the city trees, I think as long as the city's in charge of their own trees, but I do like the idea of notice so that people know. I think also if there's an appeal, we, this time we also put the onus, it was crazy that the, the property owner had to pay the cost if somebody else appealed it. So to me, if you're an appellant, you're going to have to pay the appeal cost. So I'm happy with that as well. I would not send this back to NREC personally, that's my opinion, just because NREC is a great commission, they do a lot of fantastic work for us. But I think we're going to have to be also politically courageous here, and I don't know that I want to put them in that position. So, so anyway, those are my thoughts.
What question? If we put in the term mature tree and define whether it's like the 12-inch or 24-inch caliber and, but, or to put in the term mature tree in the ordinance and then had in administrative guidelines, the, the 24-inch, and then allowed NREC to go and look a little bit more nuanced in it, but that, that might be one pathway, but.
I, I would protect trees that are less than 24 inches. I, I mean, I think, I don't know, yeah, the caliber, I, 24 inches, that's a big tree. I, I'd protect some, I don't know what the right number is, but I think that's worth talking about.
I do think if we're going to define trees rather than a list of trees, that we should have something in the ordinance that's more definitive rather than providing direction through the admin regs to, because then it, then I think it could turn fuzzy, so.
And then I guess I think I definitely would want in the ordinance specifically around the high fire zones, because I think that they, they do, well, the state law itself, I mean, they do require some different rules and easing of permit rules of what trees.
I think that's Zone Zero that I know that the state fire board is still working through, and I know they're having hearings with respect to that. You know, certainly we can ask our arborist to provide us a list of trees that are not fire, you know, that are, are not friendly with respect to fire and that, it's trees that we should stay away from planting. I, maybe that's a, a, another kind of approach as well.
And I think it's the, the five foot to the structure up in the.
It is, it's, and, but again, that's still going through a lot of hearings. And so I know that statewide, we're going to have to implement that. So it's not going to be something that we need to do at the local level, it gets implemented through the building code and the fire code.
But in, but in which case, they wouldn't require to have a permit if it's, and that's, if the state.
So right now in the ordinance, one of the criteria for removal of a tree is so that we can meet those defensible space, space standards already. So that's already built in.
And I, I would like to codify either in the administrative regulations or in the ordinance itself, what are protected trees. I, I still like the idea of mature tree for removals, but I think, you know, having to dig out.
For trimming, you mean?
20, 13, for, and yes, or for any of them, really. I think having to dig out an over, like an 11-year-old resolution that was passed, I think I'd rather have it codified in there. So I'd rather make it harder to revise that list.
No, understood. And I guess the threshold question is, you know, after we do our work on our end with our contractor, do we provide you a list of trees? Or do you want to define what's subject to the ordinance as a mature tree and then we provide you perhaps some guidelines in terms of. we provide you perhaps some guidelines in terms of diameter and height, whether, and canopy, um, working with professionals, um, you know, it, it, with that aspect? So I think there's two, two routes to go, or maybe there's a combination of both?
I, I think maybe let's look at both, and let's see what the right approach is.
Okay.
That, that would be my recommendation. Uh, Michael, did you have some?
Mayor, real quick, I, I think we were talking about a lot of great ideas, a lot of great changes. Um, I think there's some major changes that need to happen, and then the actual ordinance to facilitate curing the problems that we've talked, been talking about for over six months need to happen. I'm almost suggesting a two-track approach, because there's a lot of refinements that I think we want to make. We may want to have the commission involved, we may want to take more community input, we may want to have some, something more that, that's, that, that gets to those refinements. But at the same time, we need to have some big changes fairly quickly. So I, I don't know if a two-track approach makes sense. I know, Ms. City Attorney, you've been working on just a, a complete rewrite of the ordinance, but I'm just seeing things fall into two different tracks.
I guess i- if, if you're interested in a two-track approach, and what I believe you're saying is that the first track would be the process.
Yes.
The process and, to some extent, the criteria, um, to allow for the, um, fire issues, to allow for the insurance issues. And then the second part of the process is what's, what are the trees subject to the ordinance? And so if I have that correct, is that right, that you're...
Well, I think it, we, we could have that on track one, and then we could have some of the replacement, the city regulations, all those other things that Mayor Protem mentioned. I think those deserve discussion on track two.
It, but track two would be the, the types of trees that are subject to the ordinance? So that...
So, I, I think on the, on the tree removal, if you just said mature trees.
Okay.
And mature is defined as...
Okay.
That whatever the caliper you want, right? Then you're protecting, then, then you're saying all those trees have to have a permit to be removed, unless those, you know, health and safety, dead or dying, homeowner's insurance, those exceptions.
Well, and that would fit with, with what I think is the community expectation, was that any mature tree, regardless of its species, is protected in South Pasadena, which is where it is right now.
Yes.
So not changing that, but changing some of the removal to address that. Is that what you're saying, Mayor?
Yes, I think it's a pretty easy fix on that one, if you're just gonna go with mature trees of a certain size.
So, so currently, what's subject to the ordinance are called significant trees, and that's any variety of tree that has a caliper or diameter of one foot or more, which is eight more inches than what a mature tree is.
Okay.
So, um, if you're looking to capture that type of tree and change the process, then you're really just keeping in place what you have now.
Well, but not really, because now, the, the key thing for us was making it much easier...
Correct, that's true.
If there was a dead, I mean, that's really the, was the intent of this whole thing.
Correct. If there's a, the, the process is much more streamlined in this new ordinance and much better organized.
Correct. I think that's what we're looking for, is that it's easier to get that if you have one of these five exceptions, but otherwise, we are protecting the tree, the mature trees.
And I think we do need to look at high, the high fire severity zone as well, that's the one...
Yeah, that's, that's in there, that's in there.
That's understood. And I, I think the other part with defining what is a mature tree, significant tree, whatever term you'd like to use, is are we only looking at diameter, are we also looking at height? Um, you know, and so, because some ordinances do look at both.
So that's the thing I think we should talk to the, to the, to the arborist about.
Of course.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I gotcha. Thank you, Sam.
Should we take public comment?
Let, let, let's let Michael say something, and then let's get to, and I've tried to find the children in the comments, so, um, if I miss one of the children, I'm gonna put them first, just let me know.
Mayor, I can go on the two-track system or the other system. I think you've got two competing interests here, like with any ordinance or piece of legislation you're dealing with. We've got all of us who want to preserve our dense tree canopy in the city, but the other competing interest right now is many of the homeowners, like myself, last year when I got the notice of cancellation by my insurance company, because one tree was going through my roof and the other was overhanging. And that's happening to dozens of people in my district, a person I just spoke to today. So we can still reconcile the differences and still come to success, whether it's a one-track system to deal with the process. If you haven't gone through the process, you get that letter, you're not gonna finish in 30, 60 days. You're lucky. I got finished two days before my insurance was canceled, one week before the fires. We've gotta deal with those people that are facing that, uh, cancellation of your insurance, and what are you gonna do if there's a fire? You lose your whole house and have nothing, but we want to protect our tree canopy. So let me make a quick comment. For the kids that are here, what you're seeing tonight is residents and yourselves in a small-town, America Republic Democratic form of government that can change the direction of government. You spoke, the council of small-town, we all live in small-town America, you can change the trajectory of government, and you have. We want to preserve the trees, but like Jenna said, we're trying to move quick because people are, could possibly lose their homes from insurance. We don't want that, but we don't want to lose our tree canopy. But we're taking our time, we're stepping back, as you spoke. In our hearts, we want to do it, we're just trying to make the right decision. That's what this is all about. So a quick question, as, before you talk. Got another call today from a person I volunteer with at this food bank on Mondays. He said, "I gotta take out these Italian cypress," which is one of the trees I had to take out, 'cause it was growing 50 feet through my roof and breaking a house. Said, "I got three or four, they're starting to break my roof." But do I have to pay the fee for the, get an arborist out here? Do I have to wait two months? Do I've gotta get, uh, the, the permit fee? Then do I've gotta do the notice like I did? It took me to find a company to send a notice to your neighbors within a certain area, and that's $350. That's, so you paid almost a thousand, you haven't even paid to cut the tree down yet. So what, right now, is a current law, this person wants, the neighbor, not in my district, one of your districts, wants to get rid of these three Italian cypress going through his roof. What's the current law, since I know we're not gonna get to it tonight, what do they have to do? The contractor wants to know, the tree contractor? They want to follow the law, and the homeowner wants to follow it, and he's, he's already got the notice of cancellation. What, what's gonna hap, just for a quick response from staff?
Uh, so, have Michael.
Just really, in a minute, Mike, if you can, 'cause there's, everybody's aware that the ordinance is on vote for tonight, the residents are asking questions out there, a lot are watching.
That would be a tree removal permit without development.
Yeah.
Sure. So after we receive an application, Public Works would schedule our city arborists to inspect that tree.
And sometimes they only come once a month, right, Mike?
Once or twice a month.
So you might wait 29 days. Go ahead, that's right there.
And the inspection, it, it costs $141.
Right.
Uh, after which, should our, uh, city arborists recommend approval, staff will ask the applicant to prepare a radius map.
Is there a permit fee or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
Is that, so there's one fee, is there a fee for a permit and an arborist, too?
So that, that's after we send out the radius map and wait two weeks to see if we receive any comments back appealing the removal. If we do not, then we would ask the applicant to pay a $364 tree removal permit fee.
And you said it's radius, so I had to go to a company in Alhambra, wait there for several hours, and they said, "I'm sorry, it's gonna take two weeks, because I've got six other homeowners in the South Pasadena, and Pasadena in here, so you're gonna have to wait another two weeks." As I'm looking at my insurance coming for cancellation, go on, Mike.
Right, so, uh, uh, you know, after you send out the radius map, if we hear no comments in, in opposition of the removal, that's when we would let the applicant know that, you know, we haven't heard from your community, that our city arborists has recommended approval, and we would approve the permit. The applicant would pay the tree removal permit fee, that's the $364 permit fee, and depending on the diameter of the tree, a deposit for the replacement requirement, and then the applicant would have one year to fulfill that replacement, uh, requirement.
Okay.
And we did make a change, if you remember, an interim change, um, with respect to, um, removal of a tree not associated with development. If the arborist finds that it's dead, dino, disease, or damage that's no longer viable, that it poses an obvious risk, uh, to life or safety, um, that the director can, um, only require one replacement tree, and there's no replacement plan. So we did help a little bit.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, uh, yeah, I, you know, we're getting there, Sam. We're getting there, Sam. I, I understand that, Sam, just, we're, we're right, we're right there. So, um, on that, we are going to go, okay, I'm gonna tell you the first seven or so, and if you tell me if I missed a child, uh, someone under the age of 18, please let me know. The first speakers will be Mira Brophy, Saskia Brophy, Ted Smith, Daisy Smith. The second speaker will be Theodore Leon, and third speaker would be Yanica Leon, I assume that is a parent. Sadie Hanneth, Julian LB, Theodore Meta. Did I miss any children? Who's that?
My name is Kazachka.
What's your last name?
Kazachka.
Kazachka, okay, I'll look for you. Okay, all right. Okay, group, you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Saskia Brophy, and I'm in the fifth grade at Merengue Elementary School.
Hi.
My name is Daisy Smith, and I'm in seventh grade at South Pasadena Middle School.
I'm Mayor Brophy, and I'm in fifth grade at Merengue Elementary School.
I'm Ted, I'm Ted Smith in thir, in fourth grade at Aurora Vista Elementary School.
We are here today for the rem, for, to prevent the removal of our beloved trees.
The trees in our city provide clean air, shade, and beauty. The proposal that you are deciding on is going to strip away the protection that they have at the moment, making it possible them to, for them to be removed with little notice.
The city wants to be able to cut down trees whenever they want without even asking the residents.
Just because they don't have a say in this doesn't mean that they don't have the right to live. This is the city of trees, not debris.
Did you know that trees communicate with each other by their roots? If one tree is sick and needs help, the other trees will send it energy and help it get better. Trees are like humans, and they have feelings about things. They are empathetic, kind, and very helpful.
We need, we need to, to save the trees. This is very important.
We do understand that, that it is important to remove trees that are diseased or dying, but most of the trees are not.
Today, we have brought with us a document that possesses, uh, about 60 signatures that want to prevent the removal of the trees in South Pasadena.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you, that was very well done and very well orchestrated. And I don't see Kazan, she ended, was it Kazan? I don't see your card. Did you fill out a speaker card?
Yeah, I did.
Uh, Mark, do we have her? Okay, next up, we'll, we'll take care of that in a minute. Theodore Leon. And I think next will be Yanica Leon.
Hi, my name is Theo. I'm really against making it easy to remove trees in the city. It doesn't feel good for the ci, for South Pasadena. The city of trees is not taking care of them. These trees mean a lot to me. We used to have a house with a big oak tree. We named it Oki. When we moved to South Pasadena, I loved seeing many trees, especially the big oak tree that provided a lot of shade where the tennis court is in the middle school. Be, when a big branch fell in the city, it, no, when the big branch fell, the city took the whole tree down and never replaced it with a new one. It really made me sad. Maybe the tree was sick and needed, maybe the tree was sick, but a new tree should've took its spot. I attended the last council meeting. I heard that council members were saying that they wanted to remove trees because they were scared of a tree branch falling and killing someone. But in real life, there's more dangers, like falling off a bike, car accident, car accidents, and something as weird as getting struck by a lightning. I don't know advanced algebra, but, or chemistry, but I do know the benefits of trees. Please don't remove our trees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And is there, uh, Yanica Leon?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Sadie Hanneth?
Dear City Council and South Pasadena residents, my name is Sadie Hanneth. I go to school at South Pasadena Middle School, and I also attend a gymnastics, uh, a gymnastics group on Mission Street called Persistent Gymnastics. The first time I heard about this issue, I was in the middle of my Spanish class. I know I am only in sixth grade, but there is always an opportunity for change. I am opposed to this idea because South Pasadena's emblem is a tree. I know it's not a pretty good drawing, but it works for me. This would be a little absurd. Second of all, pure, trees help purify our air. Without purified air, things can get a little messy. There will be poor air quality and major health impacts. South Pasadena is my home, and it is, it is home to many other wildlife creatures who really, who rely on trees as their homes, and also add on to the noise concern, and this will also add on to noise concerns and complaints. I know this may not strike straight to your mind, but some people need trees to survive. I remember the first time I learned how to climb a tree, it was one of the trees, like I found out, that is not protected. That tree is now one of my best friends. I know it's kind of weird, but it is. I want to thank my Spanish teacher, Ms. Leon, who helped me pull together and find out to speak for the trees. I know they can't talk, but they have feelings, too. I talk for the trees. Hablo por los árboles. Save the trees. Salven los árboles.
Okay, Julian LB?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Julian Lanza Spenavides, and I'm 11 years old. I love the trees in, in the, in the South Pasadena community, because they make our city feel alive. They give us clean air to breathe, shade on hot days, and a safe home for animals. It makes us, it makes me sad to think of losing them, because when they're gone, we can't just grow them back instantly. Please protect our trees, not just for me, but everyone that lives in our city.
Okay, thank you. And now I found your card. Maya Kazad, Kazadlia?
Kazachka.
Kazachka, sorry.
It's okay. Good evening to all council members and everyone who is here today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Maya Kazachka, a middle schooler in, in sixth grade. Today, I'm here to argue about why we should, we should not allow the law that you could cut down a tree without a permit and not have to replace it. This law could potentially wipe out a lot of trees in South Pasadena. We need our trees so we can have clean air, one of the many things that keeps us alive. This law is also a really bad influence on our next generation. And the trees is the true beauty of our hometown in South Pasadena. So please, if you will, rethink this law and save our trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next up, Theodore Meta?
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, residents, and guests. I'm here today to assert my right as a resident and SPMS sixth-grade student to make it clear to all of you that I believe that the proposed tree ordinance should not be adopted. I'm gonna talk about four impacts of the proposed ordinance. First off, the impact on our nature, on our city na, city's nature and natural environment. By adopting this ordinance, you are making it easier to add carbon dioxide to the air by cutting down trees that aren't protected and mature. You may also be making many small animals relocate their homes or even cross the street due to the newfound simplicity of removing trees. Next, the effect on the city's culture. We are the city of trees. There is a tree on our seal. Even if we are committed to preserving this, the tree canopy will still decrease if this ordinance is adopted. What's more, the city's contractors don't have to follow this ordinance. Now, the effect on people. Many of the trees, it would be easier to cut down if this ordinance is adopted, would maybe 50 to 100 years old. Though this may not affect your generation, our generation will pay the price. Lastly, the effect on the trees themselves. By adopting this ordinance, you're making it highly probable that the number of trees cut down every year will increase. Trees may die, will die, because of this. I understand your concerns about damage to private property, but improved tree maintenance and tree trimming could improve that situation. My family recently went through the bureaucratic process of removing two dying trees, though some red tape must and will be cut. I think that we must take it a lot slower and stop rushing and not advocate, uh, not advocate feeling pressured by other cities' policies. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. I have a Jeff Leon, which might be a parent of one of the children. I have a Jeff Leon, which might be a parent of one of the children. Okay, okay, I just want to make sure you could get out of here. Okay, Ed's, uh, is, are there any other people here under the age of eighteen to speak on the tree ordinance that we didn't get? Okay, well, I just want to thank you. I think that everybody here knows we are in good hands in the future. So thank you all for your comments. Okay, next up, Ed Simpson, followed by Amy Davis Jones.
Hi, Ed Simpson, twenty thirty-eight Marlin Avenue. After that presentation, I will go back many, many years when the city council was deciding to go with another Humane Society other than Pasadena. Somebody here knows what was that all about, Michael? And, uh, the, my neighbor went in and, uh, the school and got a petition together with everybody to sign to stay with Pasadena Humane Society. You know, many of them came here just like tonight. So I will tell you, listen to the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Davis Jones, and then Steve Novotny.
Hello, council staff and, um, our wonderful community. I, um, as, um, council member Caciari knows, I served on the NREC for about seven years, and I had the privilege of revising the ordinance twice. And I'll just be, I'm not going to speak about the details in the ordinance. I do have a comment I'm going to, um, uh, write up and send to you all on my, on, on those details. But I, I do want to say, you know, I'm a licensed landscape architect. I look at tree ordinances, um, all over the San Gabriel Valley. And, um, I've also, um, I'm teaching landscape architecture out at Cal Poly Pomona now. And these are, these are issues that are near and dear to me and obviously the community as well. I do think the existing tree ordinance, I'm so glad to hear that you guys are pumping the brakes on this because I can honestly say the whole thing should be scrapped and start over. I think there's a level of complexity to it that, um, even professionals have a hard time weaving through. And I do think there's some language that really needs to be shifted in it. And primarily, like, what's, what is an established or mature tree? Um, San Marino uses established tree, and it's a fifteen-foot-tall tree in a six-point-five-inch caliper. Oh, boy. But I have three minutes prepared, but here we go. So my other two main things, I think, with preserving our urban green infrastructure in the city, which is obviously extremely important to us all, is that I think we need to hire a urban forester on staff. I don't, I think there's a conflict of interest. There's a conflict of interest between, um, having it be a, a part of our contracted tree maintenance crew. And the other thing is, I echo what you have to say, um, in that we do need an urban forestry management plan and coordinate it with our infrastructure needs as well.
Thank you. Uh, Steve Novotny, followed by Ron Talikson.
In previous discussions, wildlife habitat was never addressed. Any significant tree removals jeopardizes that, and the significant trees are their homes, and my property is a designated wildlife habitat. Owls, falcons, and raptors are protected species in California, and this needs to be included in the ordinance, whatever happened to environmentalism? And why is the council comparing our legislation to surrounding cities with lower property values? The aesthetic value of our trees is why our values are higher, so don't sell this short like that. Recently, when my next-door neighbor, Omari Ferguson, was recently attempting to illegally remove two large, significant pine trees without a permit, I never received any notification for a property within a hundred feet. And he was violating the law and depriving me of my notification rights. And I strongly urge Public Works not to approve the removal of his pine trees, especially the one near my property that anchors the slope, and it's been there over fifty-six years. We need to be enjoying the mature trees we have now in this generation and not just creating a new management plan with databases for planting trees for future generations. Like the other young man said, once you take out a big tree, you don't just put it back. So I urge the rewriting of this legislation, and I'm glad to hear this. And also, I want Omari Ferguson to stop damaging my property and stop using his elected position to accomplish his personal agenda.
Thank you. Uh, next up, oh, I'm sorry, uh, is Ron Talikson, and then it will be Angelo Gladding. Press the bu- press the button at the... Does it not work?
That's it, okay. Good evening, council, staff, and, uh, community members. Um, I just recently moved back to South Pasadena. Um, I had been living in Tahanga for about ten years, a place where I was born and raised, that area. And, um, to come here was such a great relief because of, um, the canopy and of the, um, the raptors. Um, I could just immediately see that the habitat here has been intact for hundreds of years. Let's please regard the habitat as highly as the tree issue. And the second thing is, um, if you could please, um, replace trees that are being removed with a similar, um, a tree. I know that on Meridian, uh, right there on the median, um, an oak had to be removed because of disease and was replaced with a pine tree. And that pine tree then died, and now another pine tree had been replaced. It, um, I'm just wondering if an oak tree would be a better replacement at that point because I know it takes more than ten years to mature, and we need a little, a height on those trees for shade. But I'm thinking the long run, as the children indicated, let's look for the future. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Angelo Gladding, and then Alex Wong, and then Barbara Eisenstein.
Good evening, council. Uh, I just want to start with a quote I'm sure everybody here has already heard, but I saw it on one of our drought-tolerant, uh, species lists from like ten years ago. Someone's sitting in the shade today because somebody, because someone planted a tree a long time ago. That's attributed to Warren Buffett. I'm not sure if he was actually talking about trees when he said that, but I think the point is that these, uh, tree things are more than just plants. Uh, I think the city of trees needs a cultural revival, an arboricultural revival. Uh, many trees will be removed for safety reasons, as we all know. Just a reminder, the whole dead, dying, and hazardous clause was in the original tree ordinance already. The change was to remove red tape so that it is easier to do. We already did that, and it was a one-nighter, and it was a simple fix, slipped in, done. If we're going to have any chance of keeping this living treasure going strong, there needs to be more con- conversation about conservation. So I would like to invite everybody to, uh, the Nature Park on October twenty-fifth at three P M. Uh, South Pasadena Beautiful is having their annual meeting. Uh, I will be there, and I will talk trees until I'm blue in the face. Try to stop me. The, uh, I will give you guys a nice write-up of all of my ideas. Um, I'm glad to hear you guys are giving it a second look. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara Eisenstein, and followed by Robert Spehar, Spehar, and then Thomas Soldner.
Hi. Hi, City Council, Mayor, uh, community, all the kids. Whenever I do this, I write something up, and I, I get nervous, so I read it all. But I've had to throw it away because you've said many of the things, and the kids have said many of the things that I was trying to say. But one thing that I haven't heard is, um, the process for review of removal of the trees and trimming was really moved entirely into the hands of the Department of Public Wor- uh, the Director of Public Works, who would get the final say. I think there needs to be more transparency and oversight for that. And, uh, the second thing that concerned me a lot, it was the removal for development. There's no discussion of whether this is low or middle-income housing that would be coming in or somebody else building yet another home for, that, that many of us live in, uh, for people who can afford them. So I think it would be nice to tie that into the goals that you really have, which is low and middle-income housing. Um, the, we really need a certified arborist on staff. Uh, this urban forestry management plan, our city, you know, I've heard mention of hav- of the arborist, the arborist, the arborist. But as far as I know, we don't have a staff, a certified staff arborist, and we are using West Coast arborists, arborists, certified arborists. There is a conflict of interest there. If we can't hire one, then we really should, should have a list of several independent arborists that we go to to get, to get information and not the people who make money, uh, trimming our trees and removing them. So thank you for taking a look at this. It is complicated. And I very much would like to see, see it made a little bit easier for those people who are faced with the great expense of having to remove or, or prune their trees. So thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. And again, thank you for everything you're doing at the nature park. So appreciated. Okay, next, Robert Spehar? S.P.E.H.A.R. And then, uh, Thomas Soldner.
Yeah, okay, oh, yeah. So most of what I want to say is, I say for our young, um, residents here. So one thing that I want to, uh, point out, well, thank you for, uh, rethinking, um, the, um, the amendment, uh, for the trees. I want to point out one thing, um, and it's, um, it's a very interesting exhibit in the, the Descanso Gardens. I visited a week ago. Uh, it's called Roots of Cool. I just cite a little bit about it. It's definitely two minutes anyways. Invites you, the Roots of Cool invites you to connect with and cultivate appreciation for the life-giving role trees and shade plays in making urban neighborhoods livable. In a warming world, shade and the cooling benefits of trees are essential. But not every community has the same access. So we are actually lucky to have, uh, cooling trees. Providing shade can be done in simply ways, starting with planting and caring for trees. But we already have the trees, so we should have to maintain and, and, and preserve the trees we already have. And then it goes on. California's once idyllic sun is becoming a life-threatening concern. As the climate shifts, so must our mindset. Shade is no longer a luxury, but a shared civic resource that we can grow, protect, and store together.
Thank you. Thomas Soldner, S.O.L., that's you. Okay, that was you. I'm sorry. So, uh, one last call for Robert Spehar. Going once, okay. Are there any further comments?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. Three on Zoom.
Three on Zoom, okay. Uh, one, who, who's up first?
John Cervantes.
John, can you hear? John?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, uh, uh, talking about, uh, for residents that have to, obviously, after they remove the tree, they have to replace a tree. I don't know if the city knows this, but in the city of Riverside, uh, I've heard some of my... Program, it's called the Tree Power Shade Rebate Program. They provide residents a rebate up to forty dollars per tree. Be, um, replaces tree with five trees. This is provided by their electrical company. Can some type of tree rebate program be created with Southern California Edison? It would help those residents that, um, don't have much money. I think this rebate program would be nice if we have something like this in South Pass, just like what Riverside has. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up?
Alex Wong.
Alice Wong, are you there?
Alex.
Alex, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, we're here, and I'm here with my, uh, daughter and son, who, um, we had to leave. It's bedtime. Uh, Atlas, do you want to say what you were going to say?
Why are you guys cutting down too many trees? We'll look like a humber if you don't stop.
I wanted to say thank you to South Pasadena Public Schools for helping him develop a innate understanding of what goes into our property values. And a few other things besides. You know, one of the things that they say in the consulting business is that if you follow the same process, you're going to get the same result. And so taking into account or making things easier to, uh, follow pressures like proper, um, uh, fire safety, um, ability to get insurance, many, many other...
Like those I had at the schools.
Indeed. So you look at communities who are following those kinds of pressures, uh, there's a million reasons to take those trees out. We have a large tree on our property. Uh, we've had arborists come by to take a look at trimming that. Every single arborist has offered to give us a diagnosis of the tree as diseased, dead, or dying. And so I wanted to echo, uh, some of the comments other people made in that arborists are not, you know, um, do not receive truth from heaven, right? They have an incentive to give you diagnosis, to please the customer, to make it easy for you to be able to do what you want. And so that, uh, incentive or that mechanism has to be thought of really carefully. Last thing I'll say, as somebody who works in climate science, is that, uh, trees protect each other. Trees keep it cooler, that reduces evaporation, that reduces drought, that keeps trees healthier. Trees keep each other safe from wind. So you cut down a tree for a fire safety concern or a wind concern, all you've done is spread that risk to your neighbors.
They, they also give us oxygen.
Had to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to say...
And next?
Our last speaker is Stephen Lawrence.
Oh, Steve Lawrence. Can you hear us? Steve?
Drew?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
So first of all, I absolutely second just about every comment that's been made, and I appreciate the council for taking careful consideration. And it seems like everybody's about on the same page, but it does come down to the, uh, the details on how the new ordinance is going to be written, obviously. The one thing that, that I, I think that most of the people I've heard may have missed entirely is that there are mandates coming from Sacramento, sitting on the desk of Gavin Newsom right now, such as SB seventy-nine, which would absolutely sidestep any ordinance we have to protect trees whatsoever, which the council, no matter how good of a job we do, would have no say. And thus, the citizens would have very little to no say on what happens to protecting our trees through many of the mandates coming down, using SB seventy-nine as an example. Now, because of what the city of South Pasadena has done with Measure S.P., SB seventy-nine doesn't exactly hit us as it does with the other cities, but the concepts are about the same. So my recommendation, if anyone is still listening to all these fantastic comments, is you might want to get a message to Gavin Newsom's office to tell him to veto SB seventy-nine. And I know that there are members of council working very hard to make corrections on the fly as this is moving along. Lastly, um, what Barbara Eisenstein said about having a city arborist here to sort of, um, be the guardian of the say-so of the ordinance is critical. Lots of us can speak to why that is, but the arborist is going to do a lot of things besides protect trees, like, such as come up with a really sound list of invasive trees, which are damaging our existing trees. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, thank you. Is that it?
No further speakers.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the, I'm sorry. Yes, you two, you deferred. Sorry. Um, come on up. I, you had comment cards filled out. I'm sorry, John, you flagged that for me, and I missed it. Okay. You're Leon, but I can't remember your first name.
Monica.
Monica, okay. Monica, okay.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Monica Leon. I'm a resident and teacher at South Pasadena. And Mayor Brown, thank you so much for letting me speak out of place last time in the last meeting. I apologize for that, but thank you for your response. Well, a lot of the things that I have heard have given me so much hope. So I came with something written, but I think I have to modify 50% of it. I was doing the research with my highlighter in hand, and I was going through all these points, and I'm happy to hear that it seems that we are having, we have hope that the no native trees lose protection. That language seems to be that is going to change. It's not going to be no natives, but certain specific size and diameter, which is, is great, thank you. Also, the replacements, it seemed before, the language say native trees replacement drops and goes off-site planting, but now it seems that we're going to follow Pasadena model, and maybe 50% of the trees will be replaced in size, which would be amazing. Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm highly hopeful, maybe, maybe I'm giving--
These are all things we talked about, yes.
That's awesome. So another thing is, it's great that we're going to change, you're going to change the language. One point, though, that I want to talk about it is, I understand that trees can be dangerous sometimes, if they are sick. Michael, I totally understand what you're going through. I have a neighbor who actually lost her house insurance because she refused to remove two trees. Now, what we were talking about too is seems that insurance is one thing, and the trees is another thing. Removal is not the solution, because right now, the insurances don't want to cover the houses, the insurance, but maybe because of the trees, and maybe later we'll find another reason not to cover your house. So removing trees may not be the solution. We can, we hopefully can find a different solution for that. We can find much better solutions to protect the safety of our residents other than removing trees. I know that the majority of the South Pasadena residents moved to the city because of the trees. This is a walking city under beautiful green canopies. Hopefully, we can keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have Mr. Leon, I'd forgotten your first name, but I know you filled out a card.
I'm not going to do the first half of the speech. Thank you all so much for pausing this and listening to the community. It truly means a lot. We're new residents. We deeply care about this city. We deeply care about trees. It means a lot to be able to have this conversation with the council. Last time, I couldn't explain my background. I, of course, truly care about the city. My name is Jeff Leon. I'm a, I'm actually a designer for General Motors. I'm an Art Center grad and former instructor at Art Center. My specialty is solving problems. Challenges get us to think out of the box and create something that's effective, unique, and beautiful compared to what's easy to do. By the city throwing away the tree protections earlier, two weeks ago, and giving it over to developers, was giving up, whoever came up with that plan wasn't a visionary, it was execution style. But we're so lucky to have an incredible pool of talented people in this region. There's a group of environmental design students that would love to come up with proposals for sidewalks around trees. It could send a trend of how to manage trees in an urban environment, and if liability is a concern, then we can close those dangerous sidewalks, and let's be creative. Please don't kill the city's unique spirit for fighting problems, and don't kill its trees. When it comes to working out these design issues, I would volunteer my time to do so. I would volunteer my time to reach out to Art Center, so we can have this collaboration of doing something unique for this city that can influence the rest of the country. So thank you all for your flexibility and your openness to, to hear us out. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, and that will close public comment on this item. Is there any further discussion, or do we need further direction? Anybody? Roxanne, do you feel like you have direction?
So I think what I'm hearing is that you'd like to see perhaps both in terms of the scope of trees that are subject to the ordinance, which would be certainly the native trees, you know, looking at the other drought-tolerant trees, having our arborists look also at trees that should be prohibited in the hillsides because of fire.
And the mature trees on the--
And then the other, the other part of it, those are, those are all trees that are described by name. And then the other part of it is also looking at mature trees and describing the mature tree in terms of size and diameter.
Height and diameter.
Yes, height, yes, height and diameter. So it's maybe not one or the other, or both? And is there a difference with removal and trimming?
I mean, I think the trimming, to Mayor Brown's point, the permit only really for the protected trees. I think a lot of, there's, there would be a significant burden, I think, to have trimming that expanded across all of those. So keep it to the, the--
The list of the trees that we're going to come up with.
Yeah, keep it to the protected. I would also, I, I continue to advocate for the, the trees that are truly hazardous, and they've been proven to, like, keep those costs down for people who have to take the trees off, because oftentimes, they really don't want to. Some trees, I understand the concern about arborists and being able to diagnose, but sometimes it's just visible and you can see it, like, the tree's dead. But the other piece I'd want to also look at in the development language, the development language is fairly broad. I think there are two tiers of development. There's the development that is, you know, that talks about any form of construction and whatnot, and then there's housing-oriented development. I think our hands are more tied when it comes to housing-oriented development, and maybe that's just simply having the language around, you know, state law, with the state laws. And I think that's something that the community really needs to understand. The state law does prohibit us from interfering with any form of housing development, oriented development. So if somebody wants to build an ADU, it doesn't really matter if it's affordable, not affordable, or whatnot, the state law is very clear on that, that they, that no true ordinance can prevent them from doing so. Similarly, I think, you know, Mr. Lawrence talked about SB 79, there are some very specific language around land use on SB 79 and land coverage. So I think just people need to understand that that's not something that's coming from the city, but it's a, a state decision, and so we will have to comply with state law on those issues. And then again, I think, yes, there are trees, and what is prohibited, I think prohibited means that we'd be absolutely telling them to take it out versus there's a set of trees that, you know, making it easier for them to be taking it out, because if they're in the high fire severity zones, they're, I mean, I guess, that's a state law issue?
And I suppose, I guess, and this is just, you know, just thinking somewhat out loud, is I'm sure that there are trees that one shouldn't plant in the hills, in the high fire hazard severity zone?
So there's the prohibiting the planting of them, but I think there's also, going back to that whole issue of trees that are close within that five feet--
And that, I believe, is already covered, because we, we have that for the removal of the tree and the trimming of the tree, but also Zone Zero, I believe is what it's called, is going to be a state mandate that's going to be statewide. Currently going through numerous hearings, one was held in Pasadena not that long ago, and that should be coming out sometime in January 2026. That will be facilitated at the moment through the Fire Code and the State Building Code. And so whether we need to do anything to implement that, I think it's, we're depending to see what, what that language is that's going to come out from the state.
Because I do know, as I was looking at the high fire severity zones, that there are places that have broadened language specifically around eucalyptus, pine, and palm trees in that, in the high fire severity zones.
One other thing I, to our city manager, this concept of our city arborist, it's, I've gotten several emails from people, like, hey, I can't, where's your city arborist? Who's the city arborist? Can you comment on sort of what we do, and what is, who's our city arborist?
Yeah, I, I think the, the city arborist is with West Coast Arborist at this point in time. I agree with the comments that were made, that there's, there's an inherent perception of conflict of interest there. And so Michael and I are looking at coming up with an independent arborist there. I'm not a fan of the on-staff arborist. I've been using that for 30 years, and when people don't hear what they want, they want an outside opinion. So from my perspective, we are, we are going to be taking a look at two or three arborists that we can have on a list that are independent, that do not have that contractual association with West Coast Arborist, and I hope that helps with the trust building.
I think that would go a long way.
Yeah.
Because, as you know, I called you on Friday because something was going on at the bus stop. Okay.
I have one more comment, and I just, because I know the, the concerns around having the city arborist and whatnot, but, you know, our lighting landscaping and maintenance, what I think a lot of people don't realize is that is a fund that's used to help with actually maintenance of trees. It's really badly named, because it's focused, a lot of it is, and our expenses around that went up significantly in the last few years based off of liability for the, the tree companies and tree trimming companies. And it's something that the city, the community voted against actually updating the rates on that. I don't remember, when was that vote taken? John, do, or Michael, do you remember? The last time it came up for vote, it was like eight years, eight years ago, the, the community voted against the lighting landscaping maintenance fee being increased. So now I think our budget were, what, like 700 to a million, 700,000 to a million dollars in the hole every year, specifically on lighting landscaping maintenance. So just something I think people should, need to consider is that specific tax was actually used to help maintain our city trees, and it's something that now the general fund is doing.
And lastly, I think we approved the city arborist contract a couple of years ago, I think. I think there were an RFP that went out, and I think we got one or two bids. So there's, the other thing is that there's not a lot of companies out there who want to take on cities.
You know, that was coming from community development, not public work, so it may have been a different type of scope of work, because I remember that it was former Community Development Director, interim Becker, that brought that forward.
Yeah.
And so I think that was for a different purpose, but--
Okay, I, I just kind of recall that it was like, maybe our only, we got one bid, we might have gotten two.
It may have been on the, on the tree program itself, but we are, we are actively working to, to come up with a different business plan with an independent arborist. So we'll see what we find. You know, I basically asked Michael to, to help us identify two or three folks that we can go to and provide that kind of service. So, you know, part of this is being able to get back to residents in a more responsive manner. I think Councilmember Caciata laid out some of my concerns, is, you know, making people wait three weeks for the next arborist to be here. So if we can, if we can identify two or three folks that are on a rotation, that are independent of the contract, it's probably the best thing for our residents.
Okay. Great. And can we talk about timing for just a minute? Because I think we've talked about possibly bringing a new ordinance back at, in early November?
Yes.
And so that would be, the target will be a new first reading of a new ordinance?
Yeah.
First weekend--
November 5th?
November 5th.
Yeah, the changes are substantive enough. After rethinking this, we're going to need to restart the first reading, from what I understand.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. There's no other motions?
I have some questions.
Oh, sure.
The, is the removal process, is that going to be at all modified, or is that going to carry over from the existing ordinance? The way we're envisioning this?
So when you say, so in my view, and I think that's something that Roxanne's going to look at, but I would say it's the, it's the trees that are going to be subject to permit would be all mature trees.
Any mature tree?
Yes, but then subject to those five or so exceptions, fire severity zones, dead or dying, infrastructure problems, can't get homeowners' insurance.
Are we, are we thinking about considering hardship exemptions for families that can't afford the current arduous nature of the process? For example, we had people that came to council that were trying to remove palm trees in their front yard, that were a year into it, and $4,000 spent, and that were palm trees, but they were, they were large, they were considered, they, they fit under some criteria why they, they came in front of us, right? So are we considering that type of--
Well, I think honestly, removing a, a big giant tree is thousands of dollars.
Right.
So I don't know that we have any hardship exemptions. I mean, I know there are people out there paying a lot of money to remove trees.
Right. So I mean, that makes my question is that, like, if let's say, for instance, a job like that costs $7,500, if you're putting another $4,000 of cost in that, just for the person to get the application, that's--
So I think, though, one of the, one of the things we did under the dangerous trees and the reasons for removing trees was actually reduce it significantly from what it currently is. So like, I'm actually okay with, like, taking away a lot more of the fees for that, too, because I do, it is, it's, when you have to take out a dead tree, it can be anywhere from $3,000 to $10,000.
Right.
Right, so I, and that was why it was, like, reduced down the replacement cost, the replacement number of trees, reduced down even the permitting cost. So I think I would be open for that. I also think there is places for, a lot of cities are moving away from palm trees specifically. I mean, there are, like, lists of trees that are saying, like, these are trees that, you know, shouldn't have an issue, but, yes, I think that was the whole conversation about changing what the rules were around dead, dying trees and high fires, as, like, whatever was something--
Those five exemptions.
Yeah, those five exemptions, that they didn't, it wasn't out of choice, it was out of absolute need.
Yeah.
That would remain.
If I can also make a comment, in terms of the changes, the structural changes that were made for those types of tree removals without development, there's not a tree removal or replacement plan required, so that eliminates a cost, even if the person did it themselves. We are changing the appeal cost, of course, and only the applicant in that situation could appeal if it, if the permit was denied.
Yes.
And then the replacement tree is one replacement tree, you know, 24-inch box, and the, and an arborist report is not required. So that's an elimination of some costs--
Those--
--for tree removal permits without development.
So I think--
We will still have our own arborist review it, but those are some--
Yes, I think the concept is, we want people to take out their dead trees, right? Because they're dangerous. And we want them to replace that one tree. They shouldn't have to replace it with three trees because their tree died.
Yeah.
On the other hand, if you're just saying, I hate that tree, I want to take it out--
Right.
That's a different story.
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Can, can I just bring up a drafting issue here for the redraft? So there's a section on trimming requirements that apply to, to trimming any mature protected tree. So if we're expanding the definition of a mature protected tree, we're now requiring, as written, it would require a permit for any trimming. I think we, the, the number, the kind of trees that we're trying to protect on the trimming regulations should be a smaller group--
Yes, yes.
--than on the removal side.
Yes.
And that's what I heard as well.
One is mature trees, one is mature protected trees.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Correct, and that's what I heard as well, and that's the list that may include the, the drought-tolerant trees, et cetera.
Yes, yes, yes.
If I can maybe ask a request of the council, perhaps maybe I can work the mayor, mayor pro tem, as the sounding board. I have a month to do this, I'd like to get it right, and, you know, get, you know, have some feedback in that fashion. If that would work, maybe I can work with the two of you on getting feedback with respect to that, if the council's okay with that.
Okay, that would be great, if everybody's okay with that?
Great.
Okay. So I'm sure we'll see you all back here on November 5th. So have a lovely month of October. And a happy Halloween, under all the trees. And don't trip on any roots. All right. In that case, unless there's further comment, I will move on to item-- Oh, let's take a health break until nine o'clock, five minutes. Okay, are we on again? We got 9:01. I, I was waiting, I gave everybody an extra minute. God, what was I thinking? Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order at 9:01 PM. And I think next on the item, next on that calendar is the consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the city manager to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless a public comment has been received or council member requests otherwise, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any motion relating to an ordinance or a resolution shall also waive the reading of the ordinance or resolution and include its introduction or adoption as appropriate. Do we have any member of the public wishing to speak on a consent calendar item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a comment for item number 12.
Item number 12. Anything else?
No, Madam.
Any council member want to pull any item?
Item 13?
Item 12 and item 13. Do we have a motion on any other of the items?
No, I'll also pull the items number seven and eight.
Seven, eight, 12, 13?
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar, Madam Mayor, for approval. That's five, six, nine, 10, and 11.
I'll second that motion. We please call the roll.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Katchiotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item number, I think it was seven, Michael?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, this is for the, okay. Is Fire Chief Greg Lloyd, do you want a presentation?
No, no need for a presentation. I support his item 110%. I just have a question regarding the, I do want to show a PowerPoint, just one picture really quick, it's an article that appeared today. And so study shows, go down a little bit, Mark, right there, I'm sorry, up a little bit, so I can show the title, up a little higher, Mark? There it is, perfect. Study shows air pollutants that are closely linked to lung cancer, and Mark, go up now? You can, roll. Keep going, keep going. These studies come out every day, it used to be once in a while, there's hundreds of studies now, they come out every year. Keep going, Mark. So stop right there, you see these little bullet points, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, particulate matter, carbon monoxide, volatile organic compounds, all these are what comes out of cars, especially diesel-operated equipment. So I want to thank the chief for really looking at this, protecting his employees, protecting our employees here at the city, protecting their neighbors, by getting this, which will take that out of the bay. And it's, and what they found in this study, and all the other studies that have been coming out really in the last 20 years, Janet, is that pollution doesn't take decades, but years to link to lung cancer. So these are really serious issues. The question I had, though, is, you know, when I got on the AQMD board, we did a little study, we put some testing equipment out here and tested the air on Frem, between Fremont and Fair Oaks. We had a white testing piece of paper one day, next day we came in, it was black. Because there's a 25,000 cars going down Fremont, 35,000 cars emitting down Fair Oaks. Chief, where does that go? Once it gets carried out of the bay, what happens to it?
Right. So the prime event diesel exhaust system, excuse me, sorry, Fire Chief Greg Lloyd, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The diesel exhaust system, it creates a seal around the exhaust pipe of the engine, it pulls it through a negative pressure fan, through a filter, and then exhausts it out to the atmosphere on the north side of the station. In addition to that, and just as another point of note, with the new diesel emissions laws, there are two things that are a part of our engines that were a result of a 2010 emissions, and that is a regeneration, which is a carbon or a ceramic filter that catches particulate and then burns that particulate off, which helps reduce the particulate emissions, as well as a diesel exhaust fluid, which helps to remove some of the toxic gases that are within the exhaust and turn it into nitrogen and water. So in addition to the system, or also the changes have made the vehicles, actually the particulate, reduced up to 85%. So those two things are some things that we're trying to do to help with that environmental, within the parameters that we can.
And you try to get an electric fire truck, I just want to work on your heels, I really appreciate it, chief.
Absolutely.
Researching this, great job, protecting all our employees. I just wish we could get that extra 15% to that in the atmosphere, we can't, but you're doing a great job, support is 110%, thank you.
I appreciate that, and I, and I want to echo staff's help with this, and the city manager, in helping to push this forward, just to really make that a priority for the safety of our folks.
As soon as possible. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I'll move this item.
I have a quick question. Was the sizing of this system at all impacted by switching over to the, we had that clean, we had like, we bought a truck that we paid more money, had like a rapid starter for it, it was like a clean, like, the ambulance getting a cleaner diesel, basically, right? And it was, we bought the vehicle that had, supposed to be reduced emission, it was still a diesel, but it has like a rapid start system, so it's like a zero idle, right?
Yeah, so that was the stealth power system that was a part of the new ambulance, just as a clarifying, so that new ambulance is, is gas, is not diesel.
Okay, got it.
And, but there was no changes to the system as a result of that.
Got it, got it. It was a gas vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did anybody second that item? I'll second that item. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Katchiotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, item number eight. Michael, did you want a presentation?
No, no long presentation, but this is a great report, staff's working really hard, Danielle and Mike and Tena, entire Public Works staff. I have a lot of concerns, and the concerns are, we've built up a lot of money in this, this fund. I'm not sure when it started, more than probably 15 years ago or something like that, I remember, each year, and through different Public Works staff, we've always tried to put up these great conservation programs, Todd, and we just can never, the money we put there is never used, no matter what we've done. And there's some great programs here for reducing water use, and so we'd have to pull more from the underground reservoir in the San Gabriel Valley. So I wanted to bring attention to the council, we've got over $500,000 in this account, and thank you Alma for getting information, thanks Todd. And each year we keep getting, Alma, is it 120,000 we get every year approximately? Okay. So if you look at this in your report, so for example, we set aside in the past year, '23, '24, 115,000. Public only took advantage of 60,000. This past year, '24, '25, we put aside 120,000, they needed to take advantage of half of it, 54,000, that's on page eight. So what we're finding, and this goes way back, way before, because then you're, Daniel, you have some great programs, and prior staff had done this, too, 10, 15 years ago till we lost them to Beverly Hills. But we never were able to, and the money just keeps building up. So I don't know if we give, you know, just stop the, that fee on our residents, or we look at it, but just something to bring back to the council, I'd like to hear what you think we should do with that, or just keep it building up and sitting there, we're getting great interest on it, and I hope the interest, I'm not sure where that interest is going, because that was at 4%, that's four, that's $20,000 interest on this fund. I don't know if that went to general fund or back to this fund this past year, but I'd like to talk about that sometime, not tonight, but just bring it to your attention, that should be something we look at.
Well, is that something that we could promote more? I mean, I do want to thank the rebate program for my new washing machine.
Did you get that?
I did, I did, I did.
From the MWD and the city?
It was at, well, I went Best Buy, I went to go buy my, my efficient washing machine.
Let me ask you a question, because this, was that more comment? Did you get, did you use the incentive from Metropolitan Water District in the city of South Pasadena?
I, I don't know, the Best Buy said there's a rebate program, because you live in South Pasadena, and they gave me like a $500 rebate.
Wow.
MWD, so our clothes washer is through MWD.
Okay.
We are exploring a multifamily clothes washer for tenants to explore and update, that's something that we're, we're projected to look at for this upcoming fiscal year. But then we additionally do have a dishwasher, and I introduced our dishwasher rebate that's specifically through the city, mostly because MWD doesn't provide that as a rebate right now, so we supplement.
So maybe that's something that we could ask our public relations manager to start promoting?
So what I was going to do with my comments, I was talking? It's all right. So what, that's one of the recommendations I had.
Okay.
So I put it for the public as one of our next items, is I think it was some amount of money for the public information person, to really focus on this, because when I went online, I think a lot of people that want to change their washer, dryer, you know, your drought tolerant plants, when you go online to do it, it's really kind of difficult. It's not simple, and I'd almost make a recommendation how we change our website to do what the AQMD does on our, kind of our homepage. So let me tell you, to get to that incentive program that they told you about, that it took me about a long time to find, go to our homepage, and there's really, there's not much there, there's nothing on incentives, and a person, where do I go, to my, my government, my business? To get to that, you got to go to your government, then next click is, you're not sure where to go, service areas, then the public works, then to environmental services sustainability division, and then to the rebates. On the front page of AQMD, we've got, you bring down the, all the different areas, and you've got rebate programs for consumers, for residents, for business, commercial. It shouldn't take me seven clicks to try to find that incentive.
Absolutely, and we agree, and, and staff is working on trying to make the environmental page a little bit more visible.
Okay.
First, we're transitioning with our trash, since that is just a hot topic right now, to have that be a little bit easier to access on our, our front page, but then additionally, all the other environmental services that we provide, including our rebates program, we're aiming to try and get that a bit more visible, just comes with, with time and working with our website software and making sure.
No, you're great, and that's what a public information officer will do, because you're focusing, you're doing your things, and thank you, Todd, I see your vision for why we have to do that, because staff is so, putting on your programs you're doing, great programs, landscape, everything, and Tena, you've been a, just a foundation for this Public Works for years.
Fair.
You know, the whole staff is doing great, but we need the public information officer to really tap into this, because why are we only using 40, 50% of the money that's available to our residents? Because 90% don't know about it, and for me to have to go through here and just, how can I find it? I know, I know the program's there, and I sit in the natural resources, but I think if we do that, more and more people, or maybe even have, you know, great ideas, maybe even have office hours where invite the public to come in, I'll help you go through this, because we want to use that money to reduce our use of water.
Absolutely, and, and that's something, a, a personal goal of mine to try and, you know, attend more shop talks, different facilities that we have, just to try and, and spread this, I've been in conversations with Lori from the Chamber of Commerce, also in a lot of conversations with Athens, and I'm also pairing some water conservation rebate opportunities as well. So I 100% agree, I think that this program is amazing, and definitely not utilized as much as it can be, but we're really, you know, with Jennifer on board and myself, and having the time to be able to push this out, we're hoping to see some increase in participation.
Just one more. So you know what Athens just did? We had Athens in here with the garbage cans, so when I go to AQMD, I've got my leaf blowers out there, electric lawnmowers, electric trucks, we bring them in. We should have electric wash, washing machine dryer, as the Mayor Protem just did, you know, the dishwasher, have it here and here. I mean, when we had an electric lawnmower exchange many years ago, we had electric lawnmowers in here every week until we had to exchange, we had 800 electric lawnmowers exchanged right here in the city. So things like that, you know, is just great ideas to get the word out.
So, I mean, the one thing I was going to say, really...
When you get it, when you're done.
Which was actually just aligned with our whole tree conversation, that we have in here rebates for native trees with a 10-tree maximum, so I think it's something that Public Works, when they're talking about tree replacements for residents, making sure that they're aware that that rebate exists for them, just significantly cut down the cost of having to replace that, that tree.
And just, sorry to interrupt you, but that is $100 per tree, max, that 10-tree, so it's, it's a pretty good incentive. I know a gentleman, a resident, had commented on a different city having $40, we beat that.
Yeah, we do, but it was buried in here, and I was like, oh shit, there it is.
I'm just very cognizant of the time, because we have a pretty full agenda, so I don't want to get too bogged down into the rebate program, but I know you have a comment.
Yes, I do have a comment. I think that what would be a more relevant KPI than just the amount of money that we spend in this program is reporting on our residential or commercial usage per resident, the amount of, like, water that's used, and putting the amount that we spend through these types of programs in relationship to any reductions we see on the average per capita water consumption or usage. And I think that just basing it on how much money we spend in a program isn't what we're essentially trying to do, you know? And then when we're talking about having a lot of money, well, things like gray water systems cost a lot of money, too. So we can think about the ways in which we can, larger scale projects that can impact wider areas, so long as we're actually tying it to a measurable performance, you know, indicator. to a measurable performance, you know, indicator, so.
That's a good point. You know, I remember 10, 15 years ago, they started talking about gray water systems, and we're still nowhere along. Just a question on this thing about Mayor, real quick. High efficiency clothes washers you mentioned, I just got one, and a lot, naturally, they were talking about doing that. When is that going to affect? Because MWD, I can still apply for that grant six months after I purchase it. But what about the city? This says these are changes. Going to happen or not going to happen? It's listed there, I'm just curious. So I can apply, or my neighbors can apply, because they want to know, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So as I mentioned in the staff report, NRAC reviews this annually. In this annual review, they did have some suggestions on areas we can increase some of our rebates. So we increased the turf removal for residential residents from $2 to $4 of our co-funding amount. So that's a total of $6 per square foot that residents are able to get. Additionally, we increased our co-funding amount for flow monitors. We are now, we were previously only co-funding $0, we're now co-funding $200. Similarly, within our MWD incentives, we have matched all of the rain barrel and cisterns. And then within our own city rebates, we also increased the rebate from, for our dishwashers from 500 to 750, as well as our water efficient plants are increased from, I believe it's 1,500 to 2,000 now. So once we move out from today's meeting, we'll be pushing out with our branding and letting residents know that the rebates have increased.
And Mayor, so on our, it says here to rebate, high efficiency clothes washer. I went on the application, I can't find anything about a high efficiency clothes washer, even though it says here, MWD, I went on their website, I found the $85. But I see nothing. I want to apply for it. My neighbors want to apply for it. They want to follow, they want to save water. It's not on the application.
It's not on our city application, because it's not a city rebate?
But it says right here, it's a city rebate.
We co-fund the MWD rebate for clothes washers. Our city rebate is for dishwashers. We are exploring a multifamily clothes washer rebate that has not rolled out yet.
So I have a question, and on page, there's something wrong here on page nine. Table two and three, the tables below, list of proposed co-funding amounts for the fiscal year '25, '26 rebate.
So, I got it directly from Best Buy, so I think one of the things that goes into the communications, is letting people know that when they go to the vendors specifically say, I live, this is my zip code, are there any rebates?
You know, but I remember at NRAC, they said to have this rebate on the city.
Is this something maybe we want to bring back in terms of rebates and kind of the program?
I think we should, because I sat at that meeting, and they said there's a rebate, and I mean, encouraged me to go buy something, and then I'm telling my neighbors to do it, and there's, and I can't find anything in the city website. I spent hour going through there.
Yes, I'm happy to come back and provide a more fleshed out presentation on this. Our rebates are all listed online. I apologize, I'm a little bit.
I just see why we're not, people aren't utilizing. It's very difficult to try to utilize. Staff's working hard, but it's poorly put on the city's website, and it's difficult to maneuver through the city's website.
So could we maybe ask our city manager to sort of, to look into this?
I would suggest maybe if Councilmember Caciotti is willing, if you would sit down with us, kind of talk through some of the ideas. You've obviously spent a lot of time on this. I'll work with staff to support Danielle and Jennifer getting the word out, kind of reorganizing how easy it is to get things. But if you've got some ideas for us on that, why don't we sit down and kind of go through that and be a little bit more strategic in terms of where you're seeing some issues, and then we'll ask Danielle and her team to follow up. Okay?
Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, and I think we have a public comment. Josh Betta, you'll have two minutes. We're just going to go with two minutes tonight, because we have a lot to get through, and we're going to end at 11:00.
I put in a comment card, because I was expecting enthusiasm from one of our council members on this topic, like so many others, environmentalism. And I've heard, in addition to hijacking the time available in this room for an agenda, I've heard that our staff, apparently in his estimation, has poorly put this on the website. How dare you? I've heard about the AQMD again. And I've heard someone suggest that the city's new public relations program will be designed according to what you have said, Mr. Caciotti, in open session right now, that you have somehow decided what they will be doing with the public relations program. Tell me if I'm wrong, but I only get two minutes. I'm sure you'll take a lot of air out of the room for something else later, having to do with the demagoguery that you brought on this topic. But I want to thank Councilmember Ferguson, something I've asked for a while. I've challenged you, Michael. Councilmember Ferguson has suggested we come up with a metric, so that we can measure our water conservation program. I challenged you on this before, Michael. What are the metrics for environmental programming that we can point to in terms of changes that we have made in this city, and given the many million, many, many millions of dollars that we have spent in a quarter century during your tenure? Is it something greater than the political stature that you have bought outside of our corporate confines? I beg you to think about these things.
I'd like to move this item for approval.
Second.
Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primm?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, I think next is item 12. Would you like a staff, was that you? Item 12, we have a public comment. Okay. Josh Betta. Okay, Josh, you have two minutes.
Just by way of context, to bring us up to this item, and a shout out to what the council's done by hiring a competent city manager, professional city manager. This, by my count, maybe I'm lost at this point, Todd, is the 10th time that Todd has come before us for your vote to reorganize this agency, to bring it back from a disaster that has taken place over 10, 15, 20 years. I want to recognize that. And I want to recognize the fact that the city council said in April, do whatever it takes to correct the managerial history of the city councils prior to this city councils, the managerial decision-making that did and did not take place at this diocese here. It was the council's mismanagement that is being corrected. And so when somebody says we're in great financial conditions two weeks ago, I wonder what page they're reading. I don't want to digress from the point, though. The public should know that we have a city manager that is correcting a history of problems in this community, and I see it very clearly. Perhaps we can't see things quite so clearly through the trees of popular issues. But I know those people back in the bullpen in the corner know what I'm talking about. They are the employees that often are given lip service to. He is taking care of things, and sir, I appreciate you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to move this item for approval.
Second.
And that would be as amended per the ad docs.
As, thank you.
Yes.
As amended per the ad doc.
Agreed.
Okay, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primm?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Item number 13. Would you like a presentation by staff? Alma? No, no, no presentation?
No, I'm fine, thank you. No, I mean, just, we did receive a written public comment with some suggestions for additions to this policy from Mr. Elsner. So one was having a, modifying it to say for, let's see, exhibit C to the policy.
I think, I think our city attorney had mentioned this. I think she has some, she has some recommendations, unless you have more to say.
No, no, no. Well, then, so there's his, there's his recommendations. I just wanted to make sure that it was captured.
Yes, I agree. I had Ms. Medina look through it, and we both agree that we can make those changes. I think they're good changes to make.
Okay, and then the other question that I had was really quickly on timing of when generators could be used, because I know that this has the filming during the weekdays from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and on Saturdays and Sundays, 8. What time does our construction usually, like the construction noise?
Nine o'clock on the weekends, isn't it?
I believe, sorry, I believe it's 8:00 AM.
It's 8:00 AM on weekdays.
Weekdays.
Yes. So I just, my one concern was just having, generators are loud, and I think we, we have a little bit of a noise pollution situation in South Pasadena, especially with, I don't know, the helicopters have been going crazy lately. But just from a noise perspective, just wondering if there's a way to have the generators be more in line with the construction time. I understand the film crews need to come in, set up and everything else, but before like turning that sound on.
Can I add that? I think maybe what would be more relevant is the amount of noise emitted by the generator versus the generator itself. Because I think the issue is really the sound that it creates, and you have, you have generators that are designed to be quiet operating generators.
Sure.
You know, so I think that maybe something around, not necessarily the operation of the generator, but defining a noise threshold of it.
So I think our city manager.
Yeah. I hear what you're saying. We, the intent of this was to have the film ordinance match our construction ordinance in terms of the construction hours. So that should be, they should be consistent. I would probably not recommend going down that path. A, we don't have the equipment, to be fair, especially on the weekends, which is when we get the most complaints. If you don't have that constantly calibrated, good luck enforcing it. You know, so I think what was important here was the consistency of, of the hours right now, and just from a logical perspective, we are getting complaints about generators being started early, earlier than our construction ordinance would even allow by like an hour or two. And so I recently met with a number of residents that, you know, had, were in an area where they, they set up a generator. It was allegedly a quiet generator at 7:00 in the morning, and on a Sunday, no notice to the community, wasn't in there, wasn't in the permit. And so, you know, our thought process was, you know, if we have the noise and the activity mere construction, that's probably about as logical as we can get. Then you come up to an issue of exceptions, which we have from time to time in the construction ordinance. And basically, the way the administrative guidelines are going to be enforced at this point is unless there's a 100% consensus amongst the neighbors for an early start, we're not going to allow it. So everybody has peace of enjoyment, because not everybody will, you know, participate, you know, with the industry. So this was about as fair of a middle ground as we could figure out, as just trying to make it as equitable and logical with the construction ordinance as we could think. And some communities are, they're kind of all over the board in terms of, we surveyed several that have a lot of filming in their, in their communities, and we're probably kind of in the middle. There are some communities that will make the, make the film industry wait until 9:00 or 10:00 on a Sunday. But again, our idea was, let's make it as consistent as possible with the construction ordinance. If we need to ratchet it back from there, we can continue doing so.
Sure, I guess I was just looking at the ordinance itself, and under the generators, it had the 8:00 AM on Saturdays and Sundays, but it didn't look like it was 8:00 AM on weekdays, and I just thought construction wasn't really allowed to start till 8:00 AM on weekdays.
If the, if the construction, is the construction ordinance start at 7:00 on?
So, the construction ordinance starts Monday through Friday. Can't do it before 8:00 AM or after 7:00 PM. Saturday before 9:00 AM and after 7:00 PM, and Sundays and recognized holidays, 10:00 AM and after 6:00 PM. And so what we did here, because the discussions that were happening, I think with the neighbors, was focused on weekend noise, and so that's why, one, the generator's provision only applies during the Saturday and Sunday. Doesn't mean that you can't extend it if you'd like to Monday through Friday. And we made the hours consistent with the change of hours for filming.
Yeah. I would suggest strongly they be consistent with one another.
Yeah.
It's hard to defend the neighbors when you've got equipment out there making noise. There's a reason they can have generators going, but not construction equipment, because some of those generators are just as loud.
Yeah.
And certainly, if the council would like to do that, then we can do that now, and you can give it that direction, and we can make that change to the section with respect to generators, to make it consistent with the construction provision.
Is that what people want to do? Yes, I would like to do that.
Yes.
And then we would also make that change as well in terms of the policy, the filming policy.
It's just the generator noise piece, to make that consistent.
Okay, and we'll make that consistent, because there is.
I mean, I understand they're wanting to set up beforehand, it's when the noise starts.
Okay. And then the policy talks about the exceptions with certain percentages of neighbors agreeing to extend the hours of certain times. And so right now, 100% of the neighbors, 100% of the adjacent neighbors to conduct activity, filming, or the generator noise would be 10:00 PM. Any use of equipment and machinery between the hours of 10:00 PM and midnight on Saturdays and Sundays and city-recognized holidays, plus 100% of the adjacent neighbors. So I think what we would have to do is, if you give us direction, we would make the policy and the exceptions and the timing of the exceptions consistent with the ordinance change, so that it, it tracks the construction noise.
And would we have to bring that back for another first reading, or can you make those changes?
So I'm.
Can approve it as amended?
So I'm going to prove, you can prove it as amended, because what we'll do is, we'll just, on that section B, we'll follow the timing and the dates of the week, similar to what's already in the code for construction. And then in terms of the policy, if you give us direction, then to make some amendments, you know, some, give us direction on the policy, it's a little bit easier, that we'll make the policy consistent with the ordinance, and we'll look at whether we need to tighten up the language with the 100% approval rate.
Yes, I'll move that.
Second, as amended.
And then, and then this would also include the suggestions made by Mr. Elsner as well. We looked at it, and we're, I think they're good suggestions.
Yes, I would, I would include that in my motion.
Great.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Any further, any further discussion? Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Primm?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Braun?
Yes. Okay, does that take us through the consent calendar, consent agenda? I think so. And again, we have an hour and a half, so we've got a couple things to get through here. Let's go with item number 14. And Public Affairs Manager Jennifer Colby will present this item. This is the budget of $69,500 for Public Affairs Division.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm the Public Affairs Manager Jennifer Colby, and I'm pleased to present to you our proposal for the Public Affairs Division budget for this fiscal year. First, I'd like to take just a minute to explain our work plan over the next year as we've created this division. So it started with hiring this role in August, which since I've started, I've been overseeing our public information channels, evaluating their effectiveness, with a focus on establishing uniformity in all of our citywide communications. I'm also focused on expanding public engagement. I'm working with our different departments, understanding gaps they've had with communications and some of their goals over the next year to kind of figure out how we can put those long-term plans together, and also just keeping our relationships strong with our partners and the media, and getting information, prioritizing transparency with the public. So upcoming, we have our goal now of adopting a public affairs budget. So I've identified some of our priorities and funding needs. That is centered around expanding our channels and making sure we are reaching the audiences in the ways that are most effective for residents in this community, as well as producing high-quality content. So, give me just one second. Okay, so an additional goal for later this month, the division will establish internal policies to educate staff on creating content that is accessible and consistent with the city's branding. These guidelines will be developed with advice from the new communications team, which consists of a liaison from every city department that's assisting me with putting this together, just based on best practice and their understanding of the city as well. Our overall goal for this fiscal year will be continuing to implement these engagement campaigns on major city projects, educating staff on communication standards with some of these new policies, and evaluating these efforts for their sustainability, effectiveness, and consistency. Okay, so the proposal does involve appropriation of revenue funding from the general fund to establish an ongoing public affairs division budget, and also related expenses that are currently in the city manager's. And also related expenses that are currently in the city manager's office budget, such as the salary for this role, will be transferred over as well. Some priorities right now we've identified would be creating a quarterly print newsletter that would go to every residence in the city, as well as funding for printing and digital advertising. I found that some departments did have funds for marketing within their projects, but maybe that was limited, or there are some priority projects that don't currently have that advertising funding. And there's also items for software, equipment, and professional development. So those are our focus for this year, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Do we have any public comments? Did you have questions?
Yeah, I did. I can wait till, if we have public comments, I can wait till after we disclose.
Why don't you ask questions now and we'll discuss later?
How, is there any kind of like, looking at how feedback for the city is being received within these, within this process?
Within the, I'm not sure exactly what you mean.
Like, what I'm, what I'm kind of trying to pick at is the ways in which the city receives feedback from residents regarding services and having that being somewhat uniform and consolidated.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering if we're, we're doing a lot of talking about the ways we're going to communicate out, I want to know like how are we receiving feedback? How that's captured here?
Yeah, at some point, it would be wise on our end to do a community survey in terms of how people are getting communicated with, how they prefer to be communicated with. What we know is that our social media channels are not doing the job yet by themselves. So, you know, that's, that was the idea behind the newsletters, more aggressively pulling together community meetings, that sort of thing. One of the things that we will be doing with our community or capital projects is the post-project survey. How, how did we communicate with you? How did you get your information? What could we have done better? But I really think it's going to take canvassing the community and some kind of a survey, basically seeing, you know, where they're getting their information and where they would prefer to get their information. So I haven't seen anything like that yet. It's something we're probably going to need to set up in the next year or so.
Right. I mean, for a lot of the services that we're offering, like let's say water service, we have our trash service, although it's, you know, hired through another company.
Yeah.
That's still something that we should participate in, at least being aware of what feedback is coming in.
Yes, I agree.
Uniform mechanism for that.
I agree with you. And so we'll be looking for ways of trying to capture that feedback. But I think right now, what is obvious to me is that, you know, we need, we need to start at least on the major issues. We've got a very simple, very simple newsletter, for instance, going out on the trash issue, based on all the comments I continue to get from council and the community. And we'll be putting that in people's hands. We're hearing the same thing about a lack of knowledge on some of our recreation programs. So we know that we're not hitting the mark, and we will basically be asking the community, you know, how they prefer that to be communicated with.
Okay.
Because I think there's just been a lot of assumptions that for budget reasons years ago, it's my understanding, we cut the newsletter, started going more online, and now we continue to get concerns that people don't know what's going on.
My second question has to do somewhat with the workflow. You'd mentioned that there's an identified cost for communications, for like outbound communications. And I'm wondering, is that, are all department communications now going to be consolidated through this individual communication pathway? Or will departments still be sending out communications independent of the public affairs?
We, we are having those discussions right now.
Okay.
Generally, the department, we've had several departments that don't even have that function. They've been very happy that Jennifer joined us. Other departments that have been relying on themselves, such as police department, were having those conversations about what types of communications are handled through this office versus her office. And so we're, we're continuing to evolve this as folks get used to this function, which I mean, we've got about six weeks on the job now with her. So we're getting the organization used to having somebody that's actually doing this kind of work.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
So I would just say really quickly, no, I think this is great. I think getting back to newsletters, great. Would, would be helpful probably to see at some point is just a communication plan, which, you know, the reality is that, I'm not sure we need to do surveys, much as the reality is that we need to do multiple, hit multiple platforms. Some people get the newsletters, some people get texts, some people see social media. But a communication plan is really helpful to have that's kind of based on a monthly, quarterly, annual sort of basis that gives a cadence. And actually, one of the things that I liked about Councilmember Caciotti's discussion about rebates is like, especially in the social media world of like, you know, the hitting people, people just seeing content coming, and that's, that's easy gray content and letting people know that, you know, there's money out there, that they could be taking advantage of a discount as well. So.
Yeah.
Public comment done?
No, Madam Mayor.
I'll move the item, Madam Chair, and a mayor.
Second.
Okay. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Thank you, Jennifer. That was an excellent presentation.
Great job.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 15, consideration to receive and file of city council goals. Okay, Alma Medina will be presenting this.
Thank you.
Nope.
Glad to be back. Good evening, Madam Monroel Mayor, council members, and the community. Thank you for having me again. My name is Alma Medina, the Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you our second update on your city council 2025 goals and priorities. Just a brief overview, our five priorities are finance, infrastructure, housing, governance, and operational efficiencies. In finance, I'm happy to report we are fully staffed within the department. We've completed our ACFAR for 2024, and we've started some pre-audit work. And we're looking forward to starting the ACFAR preparation for 2025 and bringing it back to you. For infrastructure, we have moved along with our design work in the Indiana, Pasadena, and the Orange Reconstruction Zone projects. Sorry, I mixed up those two words. We released RFQs for on-call contractors and for public-private partnership for the Arroyo Cycle Golf Course. And we hope to bring back the community outreach that we've done for the Parks Master Plan over to you, I'm sorry, for the Parks Palm Prevention Plan over to you within the Masters, Master Parks Plan later on in 2026. In terms of housing, the council has graciously adopted many amendments to our general plan, housing elements, downtown specific plan, and our zoning code. We also continue to work with our Caltrans folks on the transfer of the surplus homes. And then those sale agreements are expected to move forward in the fall. At mound at El Centro, the developer has applied for some state funding and is still exploring some additional funding opportunities. In terms of government, we're here again today with our second quarter update. And the newly merged commissions have also began to meet. Next steps include following up with our quarterly updates and continue with our commissions in terms of, they prepared their work plans, and now will be time to present that to the city council. On the operation efficiency side, recruitment's continued to be expedited. You've met our public affairs manager tonight. She's been great. We're very happy to have her. And we also have been working with our grant firms to, and now we have a little under a million in grant applications. Great stuff. So we hope to return to the city council with a communication strategy with Jennifer, along with some CIP quarterly updates, and really work on our KPIs for our budget cycle. With that, happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? That's a lot of accomplished work.
It's a lot of work, yeah. But happy to do the work.
Thank you. Anybody have any, any questions for staff?
Just quick questions. Maybe, maybe for public works staff on page 15. Public Works began the design of the Level 3 Charger to be installed in the police department parking lot in the solar canopy battery backup to be constructed at the Hope Mound lot. Well, how's the status of that? I know you're working off 25 projects at once in my contention. Just, just checking again. No rush, but just checking on the status. I know you're juggling 25 balls.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. For the two projects, the Level 3 Chargers, we're working with our design firm, Pacific Services, to finalize where the design is going to be. We're getting it closer to the police. There's a power station there. We're exploring that to cut costs. For the other one in the mound parking lot, that's a CPA-led project. So we have a contractor onboard that's already started with the design. They're about 20% of finalizing it. So it's ongoing with the right path, hitting the milestones that we're looking for.
And here, just in case a public asks, how's that going? When do you anticipate the first day of breaking ground? Six months, a year, or far out? Edison or?
I would love it to be six months, but we're all committed to another project. So.
Okay.
It's moving along. There's a lot of configuration that needs to be done, but we've met with them a few months back, and it's moving at about 20% on the design.
And finally, the chargers in the, in the employee parking lot that we've electrified, has anybody, any, any member of the public used them? And this might go to Jennifer's work in getting a word out that we've got chargers the public can use.
I think they have been using them already. We have advertised out. Michael, you can.
And as you, as you talk about the public, does staff use them too, or just the public? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Councilmember Caciotti. Yes, so staff is using them. We've, we've worked with Jennifer to, you know, let our staff know that they can sign up to our charge, charge point program.
Great.
To allow staff to charge during working hours. And then we do monitor it, and we see that, you know, the residents do use it as well in the evenings and on weekends when it's open to the public.
Great work. Thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Quick question.
Omar?
Did you, I didn't, I don't know if I caught, was, is there a targeted completion date for the solar canopy backup, battery backup?
It's in the design, so it's been awarded through the CPA. There is a contract that they've picked. We did the initial study as far as where the, logistically where the charger is going to be. We have to trench across mound.
Yeah.
That has been laid out. So we're trying to push to get some preliminary from them. And then we'll see where the issues are regarding finalizing it and getting it to the city for completion.
Okay. So then, as, at present, we don't have a targeted completion date?
We don't have one, no.
Okay. And then we're waiting, are we waiting, we're waiting on CPA for something?
No, CPA already has awarded the contract.
Okay.
They picked the contractor, which has really alleviated all the work that we needed to do. It's on the, the ball is in their court to go ahead and design.
Okay.
And we're working with our consultant.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I know Nick's not here, but maybe Todd, you can answer it. On the finance section, the second quarter update regarding the five-year projection on our, on our spending, I see that Finance Department is proposing a five-year projection after the fiscal year 2025 audit is complete, which looks like that the ACFAR, the ACFAR comes in about January 30th next year, and then presenting it to council in February, March. It's a quick turnaround. I appreciate them doing that. The question is, is that going to be the same outside consulting firm, or is that going to be an internal projection?
And the five-year projection?
The five-year.
Five-year projection right now, it will be, it will be a mix as we're putting together the, the 26, 27 budgets. We, with, between HDL and our own staff. So we'll work on that as we begin working on 26, 27 budget.
Okay. And HDL does, they do revenue projections, I think that's right?
They do, for property tax, in most part.
And then, then the expenses will be projected internally?
That'll be staff.
Staff, okay. Thank you.
Omar, any more questions? Any other questions?
Great. Do we have any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, move approval of staff recommendation to receive and file.
Second.
May I call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Primmith?
Yes.
Councilmember Caciotti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes. Alma, thank you for that very nice, comprehensive summary. Okay. Item number 16, design options for the Fair Oaks Avenue North-South Intelligent Transportation Systems deployment project and approval of a contract amendment with Lochner for additional services. And it looks like city engineer Michael Vartanians will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. With this item, staff would like to review and discuss the bulbout design options in relation with the North-South Fair Oaks Intelligent Transportation System deployment project. Staff has prepared three design options for consideration as it relates to the bulbouts at the intersections of Hope Street, Mission Street, El Centro Street, and Oxley Street. As a brief overview of the project, the scope of work includes upgrade of the entire traffic signal system along Fair Oaks Avenue to accommodate new ITS elements such as new poles, new mast arms with signal heads, illuminated street name signs, vehicle pedestrian and bicycle video detection systems and related, uh, equipment related to these traffic signals, emergency vehicle preemption and transit priority systems, and replacement of curb ramps and crosswalks to meet ADA compliance. For this project, the city's received approximately $10 million of grant funding. The design contract for this project was awarded in 2021. Community outreach and engagement was conducted in mid to late 2023, and a contract amendment was brought to council on June 18th, which included various changes to the scope of work, but included modifications to the bulbouts at Hope, El Centro, Mission, and Oxley. And also included amendment, in the amendment, addition of landscaping at these bulbouts. And currently, the design is at approximately 50%. To share the progress of the project, the 50% design plans were shared with our Public Works Infrastructure Commission on August 26th. And during that meeting, the bulbout modification was discussed, and our commission recommended staff to revisit the design and made a motion to retain the existing curb extensions. And the commissioners voted six to one in favor of retaining the existing bulbouts. And so with that feedback, staff worked with our consultant to revisit the design and prepared two alternative designs that we'd like to share with council tonight. Option number one is to modify the bulbouts if needed to attain ADA compliance at these intersections. It also involves at, along the approach of the bulbout, we'll be smoothing out the curb line. This is to alleviate the corners that we see at some of the, the bulbouts along Fair Oaks right now. Option number two is the current design that we have, which reduces the curb extensions on the side streets of Hope, El Centro, Mission, and Oxley. And option three is a hybrid between option number one and number two, where we reconstruct all four of the bulbouts at the intersection, trying to maintain the bulbout. But by reconstructing the bulbouts, we'll be able to redesign them without the corners that exist with the current design out there. To show these designs, the next few slides are conceptual schematics for each of the intersections, and we can, we'd like to go through them. So this is option number one for Hope Street. As you see, the only, only curb ramps are modified if they are needed to meet ADA compliance. We're adding landscaping at the northbound and southbound approach. That's the area in green. Option number one maintains the existing footprint of the bulbouts. However, some of the, you know, the corner design of the bulbouts out there would remain after this design, and the east-west lane widths remain unchanged. With option number two, bulbouts at the northeast and southwest corner along Hope Street are removed. We continue to see the landscaping. With this option, the east and west lane widths would be wider. Crosswalk distances would also increase across Hope Street. And we have approximately six-foot increase in the crosswalk distance on the west side and five feet on the east side. And all of these photos are oriented, so north is to the top of the screen. And option three is the hybrid that we're discussing, where we can reconstruct all four of the corners. But with this design, you know, we'll, we'll maintain the bulbouts along the, the street. It also allows us to reconstruct them without the corners that we see along the corridor right now, which I think staff has noticed, you know, conflicts with, you know, how people see them when they're driving, driving around them. And typically, we see bulbouts designed with smooth radii. With this design, the east-west lanes would be slightly wider. Crosswalk distance would be also increased across Hope Street. With about five feet increase in crosswalk distance on the west, two feet on the east. And with this conceptual plan, about two feet would be increased along Fair Oaks across the south crosswalk. Option number one for Mission Street, very similar to option number one on Hope Street. So we're only touching curb ramps if we need to modify them for ADA compliance. We're including landscaping as we approach. However, all the other bulbouts remain with the existing footprint. The east and west lane widths remain unchanged. With option number two, which again is our current design, this option proposed to remove the bulbout along the southwest corner of Mission and Fair Oaks. We continue to see the northwest corner remains unchanged from option number one. With this option, east-west lane width would be wider. Crosswalk distance would increase across Mission Street by approximately three feet. And vehicles would be able to make a right turn onto Fair Oaks. Currently, as you drive eastbound on Mission towards Fair Oaks, there's a left turn pocket and one lane that accommodates for through movement and right turn movement. And with option number three, we would be reconstructing really just the northwest corner, but we can also do some improvements at the southwest and southeast corner, where we can try to reconstruct the curb so it doesn't have a sharp corner there. But the northeast corner has a larger bulbout, and we wouldn't necessarily redesign that one because we feel that that one would be consistent with this design anyways. Crosswalk distance would decrease across Mission Street with this design by about two feet, and east-west lane widths would remain unchanged. Looking at El Centro, with option number one, we would only be modifying curb ramps if we need to for ADA compliance. We're adding the landscaping to the northwest corner because the southeast corner already has landscaping. This option maintains the existing footprint of bulbouts, but once again, we wouldn't be redesigning the bulbouts. So the corner design that we see out there right now would remain within the scope of this project. The east-west lane widths would remain unchanged. This is once again option number two, where we are proposing to remove the bulbout or the curb extension at the northeast and southwest corners along El Centro. We maintain the landscaping with this option. The east and west lane widths would be wider, and the crosswalk distance would increase across El Centro, about three feet in crosswalk distance on the west side and four feet on the east side. And this is what option three would look like, if we were to reconstruct all four of the curb ramps. Again, we'd redesign the curb ramps without the sharp corners. We'd maintain the bulbouts along El Centro, maintaining the landscaping at the northwest corner. The east and west lanes would be wider, and the crosswalk distance would change slightly. So approximately one foot an increase in the crosswalk distance on the west side of the intersection, a two-foot decrease on the east side, and a two-foot decrease along the north and south side of Fair Oaks. And the last intersection is Oxley Street with the northwest corner. Again, only modifying if we need to for ADA compliance. That would be the northwest corner. We're adding landscaping. We're maintaining the existing footprint of the bulbouts with this option. The remaining corners would remain untouched, and the east and west lane widths would remain unchanged. This is the option two that we currently have in design. This option was proposing to remove the bulbouts at the northeast and southwest corner along Oxley Street. It adds landscaping at the northwest corner. The east and west lane widths would become wider with this option, and the crosswalk distance increases three feet on the west side of the street and four feet on the east side. And this is how the intersection of Oxley and Fair Oaks can look with option number three, where we reconstruct all the bulbouts without the corners while maintaining bulbouts without removing any bulbouts. We would keep the landscaping on the northwest corner. I think there's a driveway conflict at the southeast corner to add landscaping there. But the east-west lanes would be slightly narrower with this design, and the crosswalk distance changed slightly as well. You know, two feet decrease on the west side, two feet decrease along Fair Oaks at the north, and three feet at the south crosswalk. So with this, staff is seeking feedback on these design options to help guide us on our next step, on how to proceed with the project. A few additional considerations that we'd like, if we would like to pursue option number one or three, that's something that we will work with our consultant on an amendment to their contract for additional design services. Estimate we have right now is about $30,000 if we select option one or number three. But however, with the project with the $10 million construction cost, we have the funding that we can allocate for that additional design. And additionally, Public Works is aware that there may be a desire to pursue a Fair Oaks corridor improvement project in the future. And so something similar to the work that we're doing on Fremont and Huntington. And I just wanted to say that's something that the staff will need to apply for grant opportunities in the future, similar to what we did for Fremont and Huntington. And this is not the final improvement that the community will see on Fair Oaks. But in the future, with the corridor improvement project, you know, it's possible that some of these curb ramps may need to be reconstructed. That depends on what the design of that future project looks like. But this is an interim solution to solve some of the problems that we do need to address with this project because it's a requirement to upgrade curb ramps to ADA standards whenever you're doing a project in the vicinity. And with that, you know, staff is happy to answer any questions. I'd also like to note that we have our engineer with our engineering firm here with us tonight. And as discussed, you know, staff has been working with bringing Tool Design Group onboard to start providing some QA, QC, and plan review of some of these projects as we go through the design. And we have Adam Best with us as well from the Tool Design Group that we're looking to bring onboard to help us out.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Yeah, my question has to do with the cost as it pertains to not design, but the cost for construction. In looking through these, it appears as though option one represents the least significant change. So it would seem like if you have a design change, you have a potential offset in that construction cost. Is that, am I correct in that?
Yes, Councilmember Ferguson. Option number three would have a higher construction cost.
Okay, thank you.
And then do we have a sense of the construction cost difference between option number two and option number three? Or would they be about equivalent?
It would be about equivalent. You know, option three may be a little bit higher, but not by so much of an amount that, you know, would be felt by a $10 million construction project. Really, the majority of the funding is going to be on the traffic signal improvements along the corridor.
Okay. And I think I understand from some of the P-Week commissioners that option one was based on if it was too expensive, but I guess if it's more comparable costs, I've heard some feedback saying that option three is also preferred.
Any other questions for staff? Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have four in person and currently two hands raised.
Okay, so I'm going to stick with two minutes because we still have, we only have an hour, and we have another item to get to. So let's start with Catherine Femia, and followed by Olivia Ramirez, then Russ Kerwin and Casey Law. We have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Catherine Femia. I live at 1700 Mission Street. I was here at the beginning of the meeting. I was very pleased to see the council's response to the concerns raised about Orange Grove and also the discussion about longer-term planning, about walkability and community safety. I'd also suggest that while strategic plans are great, the walkability and the safety of our community is also a function of all these small decisions that we're making day in and day out. I crossed Fair Oaks every day four times in order to take my children to preschool. A couple years ago, I was pushing a double stroller. Slow, cumbersome, very important. I have lots of practice and experience crossing Fair Oaks. It is harrowing. You're crossing the street, you have to watch out for cars turning right on two sides, right? There's also cars making unprotected left-hand turns. There's flow of traffic with me and my small children in the stroller from three different directions. Having a shorter space, a shorter intersection helps me to get out of that environment quicker. Having a bulbout that gives me a wider sidewalk has benefits. It lets me stop and talk to a neighbor. It lets me, if there's someone acting a little bit erratically when I'm there with my children, it gives me a little bit more space to stay away from them. It helps to contribute to the general feeling we have in our community. And most importantly for me, when I think of the benefits of bulbouts, it has to do with your visibility and your line of sight as a pedestrian, particularly when you're pushing a stroller. Often, there might be a parked car, delivery truck that's blocking your line of sight. The stroller is out in front of you. In order to get around and see whether it's clear, my children are already in the street. So the line of sight benefits from bulbouts are just critical to me. We actually had a friend who was struck by a car in that position in an intersection without a bulbout. He survived, but it was terrible. This is a real threat. Bulbouts really do help make pedestrians safer. Thank you so much, and I'm so pleased to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Olivia Ramirez.
Hello. Thank you, councilmembers, for your time. My name is Olivia Ramirez, and I live on Orange Grove. I'm here to express my strong opposition to any design options that remove bulbouts. As a working transportation engineer, I feel that completely removing any existing bulbouts that currently increase pedestrian safety would be a huge waste of time, resources, and taxpayer money. From just this evening, I've heard strong support for pedestrian-friendly streets, and removing bulbouts would be counter to this desire. Also, just from looking at the designs, I have just more comments. I saw some of the designs widen the vehicle travel lanes. I think that would be, again, counter to the desire to increase pedestrian safety, and that potentially could encourage vehicle speeds to increase. Also, I saw some of the options had crosswalk lengths increase, which again, based on, you know, what I've heard, I would hope we'd want not to increase the crosswalk lengths and to protect pedestrians. Also, just as a general comment for removing the bulbouts, just maybe have more transparency on why we wanted to remove the bulbouts in the first place. I'm wondering, did we have issues, like turning issues, or have we done existing design checks or traffic studies that show that the current bulbouts have been designed incorrectly? So yeah, these are my comments. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Russ Kerwin, and then Casey Law.
Hello, council. My name is Russ Kerwin. I'm a member of the Public Works and Infrastructure Commission that voted on this item. I'm one of the six, of the seven that did vote in support of retaining the curb bulbouts. We took the unusual action of making a motion on a receive and file item to make sure the strong feelings of the commission were heard, recorded, and presented to you guys as well. So as part of that group, I just wanted to share, first, just I commend the staff for the, you know, taking action based on the comments we provided and bringing this item forward. So I appreciate that. We, as a commission, and I'll speak for myself in particular, do feel strongly in favor of curb bulbouts and the safety benefits they provide, the walkability, the improved pedestrian environment that generates economic development in storefront behaviors that are beneficial to our community. I'll also say that the intent of removing the curb bulbouts that are shown is really to add a room for a lane of traffic to make a right turn there. And so as a pedestrian, you are now crossing theoretically with two vehicles there, one of which is eager to make a quick right turn on a red light. So again, these are, three of these streets are fairly local side streets that don't have an issue of traffic queuing, cars waiting to make that right turn. At most, you might wait for one cycle of light. But the one that is the outlier is Mission Street. I will mention that there is a work project going on concurrently with this for Mission's slow streets. It is high. It's on our work list for our commission. Number two on there is the Mission's slow streets project. It seems crazy that we would be widening Mission just in order then to turn around and do a road diet in the future on Mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Casey Law.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you for bringing this back up. Thank you to staff for preparing these options. It's great to see the outcry of support for safety in our streets. That's something that South Pass Active has been advocating for for the past three years or so, when this has been under consideration in various forums. There are 36 written comments of support for the preservation of the bulbouts. And if there's a theme that unifies them, it's probably about independence. I think it's about childhood independence, you know, feeling comfortable when your child is walking to the middle school on Fair Oaks or to the high school nearby, or even having, you know, our seniors feeling comfortable crossing the street. People with disabilities or difficulty walking may also feel more free to explore our city and be independent. And we already heard tonight such moving stories from residents on Orange Grove about how hazardous it is there. And just in June, we heard from Marengo folks about how unsafe they feel there, and it's nice to hear the city is responding to that. I think there's another point we should make here. It's that designs that reduce safety for people outside of cars seem to come up when there's a lack of a plan and a coordinated effort across the city. So we have no circulation plan. We have no Vision Zero plan. And all of these things are common in many large cities. If our city could take that initiative, we probably wouldn't have so many back-and-forth conversations via the commissions coming back to council and back and forth again just because we didn't have a vision in place at the start. So my hope is that if this is feeling slow, and it is slow, we can get through this and preserve the bulbouts with option one or three, and then maybe have a plan in place for the next time when there are revisions for slow streets or what have you that prioritizes our vision for the future of South Pasadena. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And on Zoom, how many do we have on Zoom?
Currently, two.
Okay, let's go with, who's first?
Sean Meredith.
Sean, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just here, yes, to, I'm in favor of not removing any of the bulbouts. I feel that, you know, Southern California and the country at wide, we have just a huge increase in pedestrian deaths in the last 10 years. And our drivers are, you know, very distracted, driving faster than ever, and with these cars that are bigger than ever. And so I think that removing, you know, bulbouts, we should be adding more bulbouts. So I'm really hoping that we won't be going with this option two that would be removing the bulbouts. I feel that those, even though those are side streets, and it seems a little more reasonable because they're smaller, the cars might be going slightly slower, you know, either it's a little bit quieter during, on Fair Oaks, and people are going really fast and not stop coming to a full stop to make a right turns, et cetera, or it's congested and people start to make very desperate moves to get around traffic. And that's a very scary time, too, when people are making very last-minute evasive measures to suddenly make right turns and stuff like that instead of dealing with the traffic that's straight ahead of them. So yeah, I hope you don't consider number two, and thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Next?
Our next speaker is Nate Bolt.
Okay, Nate, are you with us?
Hi, I'm here, everybody.
Great.
Hey, thanks. Thanks so much for everybody's work on this, councilmembers and the community members there. I'm also resident, closely affected this on Oxley, pretty close to Fair Oaks. And like others, we've got kids in Marengo, and we're always walking around. We love the community, love the walkability, but hugely supporting option three and option one for a lot of the same reasons that folks have mentioned. It just seems like a minor to neutral improvement to the traffic flow compared to the potential safety risk to kids and residents is just, it's such a clear-cut, you know, decision to say, hey, let's preserve the safety. And the trade-off for the car benefit just doesn't seem high enough. And totally appreciate the work to improve the traffic lights, and that stuff's awesome. But it just seems like others have said option three and option one are absolutely the way to go. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Any more comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor, just maybe a quick question for them, because I'm trying to decide between item one and three. Did the commission or Casey, your group? I've got a lot of emails and people's texts and calls between one and three. Is there any preference? There's not much of a difference.
One of the things that I did notice in that most of these, for option three, a lot of these cases, the crosswalk was increased, the distance in the crosswalk, you know, in option three. So as it's laid out, like even like on that, it's like a two-foot crosswalk. So are we reducing in option three?
Mike will come up.
You know, I mean, I actually like, so I had Eric Dunlap, who is a Vision Zero guy. And he looked at it, and he actually said that option three addressed some of the issues that have been brought up in the past about some poor design, sharp angles issues, without actually the reduction in the crosswalk is minimal.
Yeah, I mean, like, when they're saying that it's a three-foot reduction in the crosswalk, that means that, like, correct me, is the distance in the crosswalk getting, is it less distance for people to walk across the street? Or have we reduced the width of the crosswalk so now people have to walk three feet more to get through? More walking distance for people, right? And so, the more walking distance you have, that's the more interaction you're going to have between people and automobile. And so, in my mind, keep that distance as small. If you're, we're going to spend more money to make that distance, people have to take more steps in vehicular traffic, which, to me, doesn't seem like a reasonable spend if we're considering that this is a project that's now delayed and we're likely going to be seeing increased cost. I would say prioritize option one and keeping costs low, and if it can't be done, then, you know.
Well, and I guess, as you had mentioned, there's a possibility of doing an entire corridor improvement at some point, and we might be looking at changing the designs of the bulbous in the future, anyway. Is that correct?
That's long-term planning, you know. The next item on our agenda tonight is the award of the Fremont Huntington project. I imagine that the community does have the desire to see something like that along Fair Oaks in the long term, right, and that the city would have to go after grant opportunities to receive the type of funding that we would need to do those types of projects. But I just wanted it to be something that's considered of, you know, whatever we're doing right now has the potential that will need to be modified. But with the project of that scale, you know, that's to be expected.
Todd, did you have a comment?
No, I think that Councilman Ferguson kind of laid it out right. You know, option three, as I understand it, the idea was to take those sharp curbs out of the ways because we have evidence of cars running over them, but still trying to preserve the bulbous. You know, I think the conversation that we had with our P WIC group was very good and had staff sort of, you know, thinking about different options right now was real clear. They were unambiguous as far as, you know, the goals that they set out. So, I think either one of them's fine. Option three likely is kind of, is really more of a middle ground in terms of just rounding out and getting those sharp areas out that was really bothering. I think the initial design was trying to deal with. But Michael and I have been trying to piece that together since that design started a few years ago. But I don't think there's a whole lot of difference in them, honestly. I think the budget can handle them. It's not a budget issue. It's much more of a, this idea, trying to maintain the, you know, the width of the travel lane to the extent possible for pedestrians, but also take those sharp corners out.
Yeah, I agree. I think option one is probably preferable. I haven't heard that our current bulbous are defective or too dangerous in any way that would require spending a lot of money on option three to reconstruct them all. And I think we should preserve those bulbous. I think the idea of creating a turn lane for that right turn onto Mission, I think it makes a lot of sense from certain traffic engineer perspective because there's a lot of driver interest in trying to make those turns. I do it all the time. I'm waiting a whole light cycle, sometimes two light cycles, to make that right turn. But it's a trade-off I'm willing to make because I think it's better to have that pedestrian safety. Second, I think if you have that right turn, you're going to encourage driver behavior to try to make that quick right turn because now they've got a traffic, a turn lane to do that. I think we should be consistent in how we treat the right turns across that corridor, at least in that stretch, instead of making drivers think, well, I'm just going to make that right turn when I get the lane on Mission. That's exactly the crosswalk that so many pedestrians are crossing. So, now you've got anxious drivers trying to make that turn. I just think it sets up the absolute worst scenario. So, I think keeping that bulbous, even though it would create probably the biggest, quickest traffic improvement, is still far more important because of the, to avoid that situation. So, anyway, that's my own personal behind-the-wheel experience and feel.
So, John, you're saying keep the bulbous on Mission and Fair Oaks?
Yeah. In other words, the rationale for the one, the turn lane, the right turn lane doesn't work for me because it's too great of a sacrifice, and it incentivizes the wrong kind of driver behavior.
But, but
Option one.
For all of the, all of the intersections.
Yeah, don't remove any of them.
No, but I did get a couple from some of the natural resource commissioners supporting option three. So, I'm trying to understand why they did because if you said the walking distance across the crosswalk is more, it doesn't seem safe, safer.
I think part of it was about, I think part of my understanding is that it was about establishing a compromise between what was asked for in the original design and what option one was. But I think that, I would also go take a step further in saying that while the sharp corner might not be ideal for vehicular traffic, it definitely requires that drivers are slowly entering into the street, and that's, again, an additional benefit for the pedestrians that are there. So, you know, in my, in my mind, I think we can save money.
Yeah.
Right? So, it's just sprinkles.
So, I'm probably the only option-two gal here. But I was willing to do option, but I was, that's why I was asking, John. I mean, maybe it's option one for Mission and then option two. I love right turn lane. I'd love to have the right turn lanes back on El Centro and Oxley. Particularly, Oxley is getting pretty backed up with Trader Joe's traffic. I will say that. And parking is a disaster in that area. In any event, that's another, another day. I don't hear a lot of support for option two. And so, yeah, I'm sorry. I like my car. But, anyway, but, anyway, it sounds like if we're going to do something besides option two, I would also support option one. I don't see that option three brings you much, and it does cost you more.
Can I add, Janet?
Yes.
We live in a beautiful tree city. What's the rush?
I got to get to my, I got to get to my arborist so they can chop down all the trees in my yard.
I'll move item number one.
Yeah, I'm strongly opposed to option two.
We've had that conversation.
And I got to tell you that Trader Joe's traffic isn't new. It might be new to you because it used to be called Vons. But it is, you know, it is my, those streets are my walking streets. Those streets are my, it's my neighborhood. It's where I walk. It's where I drive. And it's, you can see the dangers across and all of the things the commentators have said about with the stroller. You know, the thing, I was one of the people who's very opposed to having anything done to Orange Grove Park because I'm like, dude, it's really hard for people from my side of town to be able to get to Garfield Park. Orange Grove is what we have because you have to drive across Fair Oaks. So, yeah, I'm a strong opposition to. I'm very happy that we're moving this direction, and I'm neutral, so one is fine with me.
Okay. You know, I wanted to just add a comment as someone, the stroller thing, like, that really resonated with me as someone who's finally getting out of pushing my kids around a stroller. I have three kids in a stroller, and yeah, having a bulbous was a huge deal. And I'm a tall guy, so the visibility was still an issue for me. So, yeah, anyways, sorry.
I apparently don't value my children. In addition to chopping down all my trees.
Move approval of item number one.
Second?
Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ketcherdy?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Primuth?
Yes.
Mayor Brotem Rossi?
Yes.
Mayor Bronn?
Yes.
Before we leave, can I ask, Michael, does item number one, approval of option?
Option one, option one, I meant to say.
Does that require any additional funding?
No.
It will, it will require additional design because we'll have to undo some of the design that we've done.
Okay, so if the council can move recommendation number four from the staff report as well, which authorizes the city manager to execute a contract amendment for the additional design?
I'll add that to my motion.
I'll second that.
Is everybody in favor of that? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, done.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. That was an excellent presentation.
Good job, Mike.
And I still can't turn right. It's okay. Okay, we have half an hour to get through item 17. Oh, are you up on this again, Michael? Oh, yay. Okay.
I just stayed up here.
Love it. Let's go.
All right. So, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Item number 17 discusses the consideration of selection of Kimley Horn for civil design engineering services related to the Huntington Drive and Fremont Avenue Corridor Improvements Project. Staff is requesting for approval of a professional services agreement for a total not to exceed amount of $2,440,161 and adoption of a resolution appropriating additional capital funds to cover the cost of design. As you know, the Fremont Huntington and Fremont and Huntington Corridor Improvement Projects are part of our CIP program and have been in the works with the tool design charrette process and community outreach process as well. Two Los Angeles metro grants were awarded to the city in 2021 and 2022 for both Fremont Avenue and Huntington Drive. The first grant in the amount of $6 million from the Measure M Active Transportation Program, which was approved on September 1st of 2022. And a second is a $10 million grant from reallocation of Interstate 710 funds through the Measure R Program for Mobility Improvement Projects, which was approved August of 2021. In addition, Los Angeles metro, in addition to the two L.A. Metro grants, $323,000 in Local Alternative Transportation Improvement Program funds were adopted by the California Transportation Commission in late June of 2025. So, in total, we have slightly over $1 million of Measure M MAT funds, $1.1 million of Measure R funds, and the $323,000 of the L.A. TIP funds that are designated for the design stage of this project, with the remainder of those funds being allocated for the construction. As mentioned, the funding for the project that we received did not include an early planning phase. However, the city did engage with the public through the community outreach charrette, the charrette process to gauge ideas that we would like to see with the Fremont Huntington Corridor Project. And those recommendations have been included with the RFP that all of our consultants provided proposals to staff. Huntington Drive and Fremont Avenue are two major corridors which provide multimodal use and have been identified as needing improvements for traffic flow for pedestrians, cyclists, bus riders, and vehicles. As mentioned, Tool Design Group collected public input and made conceptual recommendations for the project, and these recommendations are now going to be used for further vetting with technical studies to develop a design that will identify improvements that can be completed within the budget and scope of the grant of this project. In July, staff posted a request for proposal on Planet Bids, requesting proposals from qualified professional civil traffic engineering firms and experienced in the design of roadway and traffic signal design improvements. Firms were asked to demonstrate their qualifications to complete project approval environmental documents and plans, specifications, and estimates for the project. Six qualified firms responded to the RFP and were invited to participate in oral interviews. A selection panel of three individuals selected by the city evaluated the proposals and the interviews, and the firms were ranked by their qualifications. The free proposals were opened and ranked as well. Of the free proposals received, this consultant's fee is reasonable and with respect to the proposed scope of services. And the firms ranked as following: Kimley Horn with number one, Advantech Consulting Engineers as number two, HDR Engineers with number three, JMD as number four, H.W. Lochner as number five, and Somas as number six. Kimley Horn's an engineering firm with over 10,000 employees and 145 offices nationwide, 350 of their staffs located in Los Angeles and Orange County. They focus on providing these types of planning and design needs for over 75 agencies in Los Angeles County. They have decades of experience working with various agencies and organizations providing services of similar scope and nature for various agencies throughout Los Angeles. As mentioned, with the budget allocation, we'll have adequate funds to begin the design process now, and we're hoping to get the construction started as soon as possible. And Kimley Horn is also with us tonight, and they're also excited to get the project started. And staff's happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I do. We just received this presentation today, correct? So, I haven't had an opportunity to really look into the presentation, including the design pieces. And I think, you know, the first question I really have is really around, you know, the tool design portion, the charrettes. So, we spent over $400,000 on that project, and it's more than a charrette. It's more than just some recommendations. They did provide an actual plan, and with, like, the conceptual is, yes, with next steps. And the council and the community has never seen that. They did a really great job on their outreach. I'm trying to understand why that never came back to the council, why that never came back to the community. I know that I went to P WIC, I went to that meeting, and there was a presentation there. But it's, what I'm trying to understand is now we're here, like, approving another group to do the design when we never actually saw what they had finished, you know, what they, yes, conceptual. But then said, okay, those recommendations are in here, but I'm not sure what happened. So, one, I just like, what happened, I guess?
You know, I think the Tool Design Report was presented to the Mobility Transportation Commission late last year. Not entirely sure why that never came to council. We can certainly bring it back to council to review the recommendations and the, you know, the document that Tool Design prepared with council. That's perfectly fine, and we're happy to do that.
Yeah, because I think part of the reason is, as I was looking through this document, I think, you know, I want to move forward with this, and I understand the need to move forward. But there are some, you know, designs in here. And, you know, when I was looking through the notebook, through the binder, I was like, where the, what are we approving? I wasn't really sure because the designs weren't there. But the other piece is that, you know, the money is from the, it's Mobility Active Transportation Program, right? And so, you know, the thing that I keep harping on, the tool piece of it, is that we need a mobility active transportation plan. The, what they delivered actually looked at the three major corridors, as well as adjacent streets, including Marengo, Orange Grove, Monterey, Mission, and Fremont, Fair Oaks, Huntington. So, all of the areas that we're talking about from a safety perspective, and that's why I'd like to see it come back to us. So, at least we can have a view of it and then talk about the next plans for a citywide issue. Because I think what we keep hearing over and over again is, like, people talking about individual streets and concerns, and, you know, if you pinch one area, it goes to another. So, wanting to have that conversation. But coming to this Huntington piece, I would like to, you know, I have access to the tool. It's online. But I would like to, as we go through this piece, be, you know, thoughtful for the council, for the rest of the council to know what that is and understand that we are really looking at a multimodal transportation piece, and that is really kind of the vision for the future of the city and the prioritizing of safety above all else. And I think kind of coming off of the last item where, you know, it had moved to, even though, like, the charrette had happened in 2023, we moved back to 2021 plans. It was like prioritizing throughput, but making sure that what we're doing is really prioritizing safety in this. So, that was my main thing. It was, I had my questions there, and then I'm like, oh, but there are plans. So, and I need to go through this.
I think, I don't think either Michael or I can answer your question why, you know, the loop wasn't closed. What I will tell you is I've asked Michael to bring tool on, to be our representative with him, work with him from a QA/C perspective to make sure that that work, the integrity of it is maintained in this design. You know, and I'm not sure how high-level the tool group study was versus actually getting in and drawing engineering designs themselves. So, you could, something that a contractor can actually build to. You know, but we are going to be adding them to our team to be assessing this work and making sure that that, that public input and those, and the, I guess, the spirit of those designs is maintained. And Michael also did a, he was very specific about, before we went out to this process, making sure that there was reference to that work that the council asked for a few years ago so that wasn't lost investment, stranded investment. So, we're trying to maintain the integrity. So we're trying to maintain the integrity of that process and the respect for the residents who went through those items. And so.
I know that, sorry, wow. No, I know that, you know, money is always a concern. And so, you know, rather than necessarily repeating, so we can spend $400,000 on this conceptual process and this charretts process, and rather than repeating that piece, I want to see money going towards our citywide mobility action, active transportation plan and making sure that, and which is, this funding can help be used for, so just.
Yeah, I think that to keep this project in perspective, getting the design underway, the actual construction design underway is, is critical right now. We've lost four years.
Got it.
Of earning power on this. So your point's well taken in terms of the, of the process that went through. We're going to have to get more community engagement because while there's a lot of ideas in there, it wasn't necessarily connected with an engineering design.
Got it.
And so we will be, we will be going back out to the community. We're talking about just how many meetings we have, what that looks like. And that's why we felt it was important to have Tool back in advising us as a kind of a Q A Q C. We knew the council would be concerned about it. So, and in terms of your, your comment on the mobility plan, we couldn't agree more. It's just more of a matter of that, you know, that's probably the next project up sometime in the next quarter or two, depending whenever we get there. It's not budgeted for, but it, we're having so many one off issues, we really need to get that coordinated plan moving.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, my sense is that we need to get this, this has been on the books for a while. So we need to get this kind of moving, but, but they're sort of getting it moving now and then there's sort of, that brings up like, oh yeah, we need a longer term mobility plan. So, Omari?
I think that obviously needs to get moving. I think that the thing is going to be getting all this input that's cohesive as we move forward. So I think we'll probably end up, it sounds like we're going to be on some parallel pathing where essentially we're going to be moving this forward while at the same time building out this mobility plan and keeping this two kind of in sync with each other.
I think the mobility plan is kind of the next step. You know, we're going to have to go out to the market again. We will get, we will get proposals. It's going to be a different emphasis on the mobility plan, what our goals are. So we may very well start the conversation with Tool right now. Given all the conversations we're having, it really, you know, and get a proposal from them to be back to you, we're still working our way through what that looks like right now. But this is, our main priority right now has been getting this thing moving because we're, we're losing that, that earning power, that $16 million we got.
And this is in, this is in our approved CIP?
It is. What's going to be important here is we don't know, once this thing is scoped and the engineers get a chance to actually give us construction estimates, we don't know how short we are in the funding, which is very important and why we need to move this along.
Yep.
My guess is we're going to have to go back to Metro at some point and ask that some of the money be reprogrammed for the $710 in order to make this happen. And that's, that's really the urgency right now is he's, he's under a tight deadline. We've got two years because we've, you know, two years to get the project underway, but we also need to know how much money we need to add to the project.
Yep, makes sense. Do we have any, oh, John?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we need to dovetail the, the tool design, that planning process with what we're doing here. And I don't, I'm not hearing that there's any conflicts. I'm hearing that we need to move forward. I know we've got funding challenges that we need to, you know, timely meet. All I would say is as we do move forward and involve Tool, as design issues come up, let the council know. I mean, we don't want to micromanage things, but we don't want to, we don't want a, a conflict between what we believe the community wants in the tool design and what some engineers might decide is the best way to do this design to go unaddressed. I mean, we're quick studies, we work together, we dive, make a deep dive. I mean, I think you can trust us to be a partner in any design issues or conflicts that come up.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
No one on Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
Does anybody have a motion?
Ready for a motion to move this forward.
Make the motion?
Yeah, so I like a motion that we approve the recommendation for item number seventeen.
A second?
And that would be as amended per the ad docs?
Yes, correct. I'd like to make a motion as amended per the ad doc.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Purmuth?
Yes.
Councilmember Ketyerdy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rossi? Mayor Braun?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, I think we're moving, we've already taken care of eighteen, which was 4B. Now we're going to move to nineteen. We have no continued public comment. Number twenty, Councilmember Communications. Anybody have anything they want to communicate? I know, Michael, you've got something. I'm going to make you go last. I'm kidding.
I'll go last.
Do you want to go last or first?
Last.
Okay, John?
No, no report.
I think that's the same thing, but I'm, no report.
No report? I have no report?
So I just had a quick one. I said it earlier at the beginning of the night, but I'm going to just repeat it. I think, you know, we've, we've seen a rise in fatalities and critical injuries from transportation issues. And so, that's why I am pushing so hard for things like the Mobility Action Plan and looking at making sure that we have the funding there to do a comprehensive plan in the, for the long term for the city. But in the short term, I would like to see a suite, have Vision Zero said before and throughout our general plan. So I would like to see the Public Works Commission have ad hoc and look to develop a Vision Zero, to actually develop a Vision Zero plan and to work with, to work on implementing that so that we have an approach to handling safety and looking at how we are really looking at pedestrian, bicyclists, vehicleers, safety across the city. One of the interesting things that I said, I spoke to Eric Dunlap, who is our Public Works Commissioner, but he's also on the county's Vision Zero team, is, you know, even things, and you guys did it, but there was the wraparound quick response to fatal collision and you, you know, showed up there within days. And I think just, you know, making sure that we have that as part of a policy and create that policy and, you know, have those kind of responses so people really know that we're, we're not just saying thoughts and prayers, but that we actually are looking at, you know, action items for it.
Okay. And Michael?
Don't you have anything, Madam Mayor? Okay, I want to thank Casey, he reminded me that this is the week without driving, started Monday. If you can, you know, leave your car home, get on your bike, walk down the street, genital walk down Mission, Oxley, you know, Centro, right to the store without making a right turn.
I'm getting in my car. Actually, I'll be out of town, so.
She'll be out of town, so, okay, thank you. On that one, next, we've got pictures on the left, that was over on Yonah Church, Anna talked about that bag of sal, that was a food giveaway that, there every couple of weeks. Next is the Wispah meeting, and there, that was in the library a few weeks ago, next. On the left is that, thank you for supporting me, every council member. That was our block party on Stratford near Oxley. We had a great time, there's some of the signs set up, they set up the traffic control signs, we had about, I was just starting right there, so it was about 60 people, it was a great time. Next, this was the Food Bank again this past Monday on the right top, that's Brad was in Garfield Park for a little pop up concert last Wednesday night, there's people watching him, next. And this was this morning's homeless committee meeting at the Monrovia, Sengi Valley Council Governments, it was at 8:30, there's some good programs. We're part of a 19 city group that the college working on with money from the LA County. And we're working with three different providers, they spoke to us, we're kind of putting that together, really work with least short term housing, getting some of these people off our streets. Thank you.
And I might amend my no comment, but Todd, did you want to talk about the meeting with the county? Do you want to talk about it and Metro?
So we, yeah, so the staff did host a meeting, Mayor Braun attended with us today with Supervisor Barker and as well as folks from the LA County Sheriff's Department, Metro Police Department, just to discuss kind of coordination for homeless issues down near the train station and, you know, improving our responsiveness and partnership there. So there's a lot of good information shared, particularly with our police and fire department. I think there is some information was very helpful to fire in particular. And we're also going to be taking a tour shortly with, with one of the representatives from Metro on some ideas that they've had in terms of environmental design as well. So that was a good conversation, people met that didn't really know each other and exchanged information. So it was a healthy, healthy meeting today.
Yeah, it was, there were about 15 people there. So the county and Metro brought a lot of people. We talked about a lot of issues we've been having and actually, and Shannon, thank you, Shannon was critical there, as well as firefight, well, is he a chief? Done. He's not a chief. What is his rank?
He's our new, he's our new division chief.
Division chief. Done, he was also there, so thank you for that. But it was really, I think this council should know, I mean, the county was very, very willing to help with resources and I think we just need to start reaching out more. And they did have great ideas on the park and that kind of thing as well. So, anything else?
Not for me tonight.
Okay. With that, I am going to say I will now adjourn the regular city council meeting to Wednesday, October 15th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. It is now 10:47. Thank you and have a nice evening and go Bucks, beat Minnesota.